I'm going to wait one. So, we got two minutes. We're waiting for the two more people to come back.
And Turk, when you're all set to report out?
Yeah.
Okay. When the clerk says. Okay. We'll bring this meeting to order at 6:10 PM. First, we'll do the call to order and roll call.
Yes. Councilmember San Antonio?
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember O'Hara?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Lyons?
Here.
Mayor Ayers?
Here.
Record will show that all members of the City Council are present this evening.
Okay. If you can rise, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, this is really a good group. You guys were in unison. That was well done with a big group. I do want to start out with one special announcement. We lost a resident, a young resident earlier, what, a week ago now? And so if you would please join me in a moment of silence for Emery Chalikian. She was a 12-year-old. It was hard. She was a 12-year-old that passed away from a tragic accident on Encinitas Boulevard. She'll be sadly missed but not forgotten by her family and friends. So if we could just take a moment here of silence. Thank you. The next item would be special presentations. Today, we have the honor of presenting a proclamation for Wildfire Preparedness Month. And I believe accepting it is, is it Sarah and firefighters? Who?
Sounds like a band.
I guess, yeah. It's all here. Test, test. Yep, that sounds better. Okay. So, accepting the proclamation with is Sarah Lifton, who is the president of the Alvenheim Fire Safe Council, but also her band, which includes Fire Chief Josh Gordon, Jorge Sanchez, deputy fire chief, Jordan Villagomez, senior deputy fire marshal, and Marie Jones Kirk, emergency manager. And somehow slipping in there is also our captain, Captain Watts. So... Yeah. They are applauding for you and for all the effort you and the departments, both departments, have done to prepare for wildfire season. And it's one thing I keep telling the city manager and the fire chief and Sarah, I do not want to be the mayor standing up there like the mayor of LA saying what I should have done two years ago. So we're trying to get it done now so that we're prepared if that inevitable thing happens, and we hope it doesn't, of course, but we better be prepared. So that's what this month is about. And with that, I will read the proclamation. Whereas wildfire pose a persistent threat to the safety, property, and natural environment of the city of Encinitas, requiring proactive measures from residents, businesses, and emergency responders; and whereas, preparedness, prevention, and community-wide cooperation are essential in minimizing wildfire risks and protecting homes, infrastructure, and our cherished open spaces; and whereas, increasing public awareness through education, community programs, and outreach efforts can significantly reduce the impact of wildfires and enhance the resilience of all our neighborhoods in Encinitas; and whereas, the Alvenheim Wildfire Safe Council has enhanced... Oh, sorry, Fire Safe Council. Whoops. Thank you. The Alvenheim Fire Safe Council has enhanced wildfire awareness and preparedness among residents by actively engaging the Alvenheim community and collaborating with the Encinitas Fire Department and Sheriff's Department. Whereas, the city of Encinitas remains committed to supporting residents, businesses, and organizations in promoting fire safe practices and fostering cultural, a culture of resilience; and whereas, the city of Encinitas remains committed to supporting residents, businesses, and organizations in promoting fire safe practices... Whoops, I'm sorry. Did I read that once already? ...and fostering a culture of resilience; and whereas, the city of Encinitas urges all residents to stay informed by registering for alert San Diego notifications, familiarizing themselves with their designated evacuation zones, and utilizing the Genesis Protect application; and whereas, wildfire awareness month serves as a vital reminder to take proactive measures such as defensible space creation, home hardening measures, emergency planning, and ensuring neighborhood readiness. Now therefore, I, Bruce Ayers, mayor of the city of Encinitas, along with all of the city council members, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as wildfire awareness month in the city of Encinitas, and encourage all residents to take the time this month to review emergency plans, create defensible space around homes, sign up for local alerts, and take steps to reduce wildfire risk in our community. Thank you.
We need a picture. Let's cut together a little bit, and it'd be nice if we get the rest of the councilors here as well.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's okay.
What photo shop do you have?
Sorry, Jim.
It's the one who took a tour of Alvenheim while he was still campaigning, and he's not even representing our district because he cared enough. I just want everyone to know that. And he brought Rudy out.
Perfect. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
The next item is oral communications. How many do we have?
We have seven.
Seven, okay.
And just a reminder to those of you that completed oral communication slips, this is the time to speak to the city council on items that are not listed on the agenda. So I'll call you three at a time. Christine Schindler, Danny Saulshandler, Natalie Satun.
All right. Hello, everyone. Christine Schindler, East Encinitas. I decided to old-school it. I saw people do this, and it makes me feel like I'm in elementary school, so... I just want to let everybody know it's May Bike Month, and since we're midway through May and we haven't done a proclamation, I'm going to do one myself. So whereas, it's May 14th, I want to encourage everyone to celebrate May and ride a bike. If you don't ride a bike, who knows? And we have Bike Anywhere Day coming up tomorrow, which is our old Bike to Work Day, but now you can bike anywhere, which you always can. And then on Sunday, Cyclavia, it's our fifth Cyclavia. I want to thank and congratulate our deputy mayor. She was involved in making this happen, among other people, including Nick Buck. So I cheer you guys on. It's wonderful. Come out and check it out. It's a lot of fun. So there's flyers out in the lobby, or I have a few if you want one. And it was very out of the ordinary, but I got a grateful card from the League of American Bicycleists because I asked them to promote it as well. So that was kind of fun to receive. Okay. So more importantly, last night, there was a community meeting to talk about the Santa Fea project, the Western Phase, which had been put on pause, pause and observe. It was not a big crowd. I was kind of surprised by the turnout. I would say 50/50. 50 in support of, 50 not so much in support of. I was very impressed with staff. So thank you, Batter and the rest of the team. Put together a well-done presentation with some good before-and-after photos and some videos. Unfortunately, I don't think it was recorded, so a lot of people missed out. That's why I wanted to give a little bit of a summary. So some of the intent of the project, I think, is still not understood. So the idea of narrowing lanes to do traffic calming, you know, half of the group understands, likes that, thinks it's working, the other half of the group, not so much. It makes them uncomfortable, which is exactly the intent of traffic calming, to make you uncomfortable and slow you down. What was nice was there was also acknowledgement that it's not a fully baked project because the two intersections at either end of the Western Corridor are not done, and they're unsafe because of that. So there was a push to get that done. There was some agreement that we need to focus on some pavement and some other things that all of us see as shortcomings of the project.
Okay.
Just wanted to give you a summary.
Thank you.
Danny Saulshandler, Cardiff by the Sea. I'm here tonight representing the 101 Artist Colony. Page one. I have discovered that there's some people in Encinitas that don't know anything about Arts Alive exhibit. And I told Norma that, and she goes, "Well, Danny, there's other things going on." What could be more than a six-mile art exhibit of incredible paintings on the light poles from Lucadia to Cardiff? And she says, "Danny, there's a lot of other things going on." So, which, I guess that is true. So a quick rundown. We started in 2000, kind of on a whim. We invited artists to paint for the exhibit. We didn't know what we were doing then, and we barely know what we're doing now. But we get the vinyl canvases. We give them to the artists, they paint them. Takes them a couple of months. And then I call them and tell them, "Look in the dictionary, there's a thing called a due date." And they look that up, and they go, "Oh." And we get them all turned in. We photograph them, we make the auction guide. We have an unveiling. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being at our unveiling and the kind words. We hang them on... I used to hang a lot of them myself. Now, Norma says I need to maybe let someone else get the bucket truck. So I miss the bucket truck. We hang them up on the light poles where they are now, where you can go and drive up and down the street, and you can see them. It's absolutely incredible. I don't think there's another thing like it anywhere around here where you see original art painted. And I ask the artists, "Why do you do that?" And people ask me, "Why do artists do that?" They are not going to get very much money for their art. And they get subjected to public scrutiny, critiquing by humans, they get critiqued by the birds, they get critiqued by the weather, they get critiqued by everything that can critique. And they have to put up with me for months on end, why do they do it? And I don't know why they do it, but I'm glad they do it. We've been doing it for quite a while. We take them down, we hang them on the light pole after the unveiling, then we take them down. They get so dirty up there. We used to do this for four months. Now we do it for two months. After four months, my hands would be black from working them. So there should be some way to get the EPA a grant to decide what's on those banners that they could figure out where it's coming from. I have an idea. Anyway, I got banner, auction guides here. I'll put them in the lobby.
And what date is the auction?
By the way, the auction is July 13th.
Yeah. Danny is an artist, not maybe a salesman, so I had to get him to the close. So, yeah, yeah.
Following Natalie will be Raul Vilamar, Bernadette Dillon, John and Bridget Chalikian, and then Josh Armstrong.
Natalie Satun, Cardiff. Hello, mayor and council. First, I want to thank you for directing staff to engage a neighborhood meeting on Santa Fe last night. I hope you and staff are all well aware that we have had our first pedestrian struck by a car on the new improved section of SDA corridor. This is the collision report. Actually, I don't have the collision report right here. Josh Gordon did supply us with that, so we do have availability for you all to see that. Where EFD had to provide advanced life support for his critically traumatic, life-threatening injury. So I'm here tonight to ask you all to be leary of staff recommendations and question every recommendation that comes your way. The Santa Fe survey had several biased questions, so I did a public records request, and this email right here, actually, can do page two, came through from councilperson Joy Lyons to Jennifer Campbell, editing the approved survey with proposed changes that traffic engineering staff put through the survey questions through the software to remove all bias. Questions were changed to leading verbiage. Do you like the narrowed vehicle lanes creating lower speeds rather than, do you like the vehicle lane, the narrow vehicle lanes? And do you like the reverse angle parking, which added 15 spots, rather than, do you like the reverse angle parking? You can also take the survey multiple times without restriction. All of this was done by Joy to our city manager, seemingly without your knowledge, Marco, Jim, Luke, and Bruce. I can find no evidence of the four of you being included in any of these changes. Be very cautious that you're being undermined while one council member is directing staff to satisfy her own political agenda. This is Joy's post within the last, the last one. Within the last 24 hours evidencing her solid position, she made her intentions clear that she is disinterested in public opinion of the survey results that are closing on the 16th that she herself altered. Thank you to the four of you who eagerly await the results of the survey and value your constituents' opinion. This is what representing the people look like. Thank you.
And after Raul, who is it?
After Raul is Bernadette Dillon, John and Bridget Chalikian, and then Josh Armstrong.
My name's Raul Vilamar. I own this Encinitas Barbers. This year will be 45 years. The next door is the Coin Shop. They've been over 47 years. The Bookstore, over 45 years. The Thrift Shop, over 50 years. Now, our parking lot has five parking spots. We keep on having these people park because they keep on saying there's no parking in Encinitas. I've been coming here and been coming here, and nothing has been done. Right now, I just drove down from 7-Eleven all the way down to Swamis and came back. All these restaurants are either closed, or there's nobody sitting in front. They tell me, "I came here on Monday night to get my son a haircut, and we did the same thing, drove all the way up and all the way back. There's nobody there." In the mornings, when I get here, I drive up and down. There's nobody standing there. Saga has a barrier which has plants in front of it. No cars. All the other restaurants, no cars. Where are we going to park? It's getting worse. All my customers just keep on complaining and complaining there's no parking. I have the alley and the founders alley behind dispensaries and all the other people, and they're full by the people who are employed there. I ask if I can park there, and they said, "No." I get towed. Is that an alley, or is it the parking spot for everybody else? You know? There's a red zone in the, with the hydrant, right on the corner of East Street and Founders. Founders. And that's a parking spot for picking up your dispensary products. I called in, took 10 minutes to show up, and the guy's already gone. And then somebody else a little later calls, goes in there, and the response for people to come by and give tickets, they're not there. What happened to Ace? The Ace Parking? They're not around anymore. People stand there more than two hours, three hours at a time. There's, you know, I don't know what to do. If I can get somebody to tell me one of these days, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Ayers and council members. My name is Bernadette Dillon, and I have lived in Cardiff for 30-plus years. Thank you for the community meeting last night on Santa Fe Drive. It was awesome. The video that the amazing engineer team put together proved my point. The video showed a 70% drop in cars on Santa Fe Drive. Where did all the cars go? They headed to our unprotected side streets south of Santa Fe Drive. Moonivar, no bike lanes, partial sidewalks. Justin Road, no bike lanes, no sidewalks. Kathy Lane, no bike lanes, no sidewalks. Ocean Crest, no bike lanes, no sidewalks. Santa Fe Drive is a main artery for our community. It needs to be restored. Remove planter boxes and backup stalls so we meet the national transportation laws and the state of California moveover laws. You cannot move over right now on Santa Fe Drive. So everybody that's on there, and if an emergency vehicle comes up behind them, they cannot move over. There's no place for them to because the planners and the backup stalls don't allow for it. Keep the bike lanes. El Camino Real all the way to I-5, I totally support that. Concrete ballards. Keep our kids protected, all the bicyclists. But get rid of those planter boxes in the backup stalls. Please do not put backup stalls and planter boxes on the eastern side of the project. Waste of money, and the same problem's going to happen. We're not going to meet the moveover law. Protect our kids who live and play on our side streets. Restore Santa Fe Drive as a main artery. If you want to slow down traffic, dips like Melba and Ballbor, Ballor, sorry, and speed plates like the ones on the 101. Do not use the excuse if we need planter boxes to percolate water for the state of California. Move the planter boxes to the I-5 northbound on-ramp east side from Santa Fe Drive to Requeza. It's open land with brush. Clean out all the brush, and you have a beautiful area 10 times bigger than what's on Santa Fe Drive right now. Santa Fe Drive Western Project does not meet California's requirements for California drivers to move over when emergency vehicles need us to move out of the way. On this basis alone, those planter boxes should be removed along with the backup stalls. Please do not waste any more money. No one wants another Bodie. No one wants cars T-boning on Santa Fe Drive due to the blind integration of the traffic lanes from the backup stalls. No one wants any pedestrian, small child to a senior citizen killed on a side street. These changes have to be done before the 51 units go in. Thank you.
Thank you, council, for having the chance to address the group here. My name is John Chalikian, my wife Bridget Chalikian. We are the parents of Emery Chalikian, who was, life was taken on April 25th at the intersection between Encinitas Boulevard and Village Square Drive. I've been an Encinitas resident for 25 years. This is my first time at council. But I do want to say in advance, I think the order was a little interesting, but we are here to fully endorse the video that Mr. Armstrong is about to present on our behalf. He built it out of his own goodwill. I've been in the same home for about 20 years now, in the Village Park area. Bruce, we voted for you. We like the idea of slowing down the city, the growth, the high density. We really appreciate that. Interesting theme emerging tonight around public safety, city safety, street safety. Our daughter was a victim of a bad outcome. We are now victims of a terrible tragic outcome. The community outreach has been amazing. That's all I can say. We are being propped up by just a tribe of angels right now. Dozens alluded to this incident being probably one of the most tragic events in recent history, if not long-term history, in Encinitas. I know there are other children that have died, but I do need to bring it to the attention that this was a very tragic event, a red light incident. Our daughter was taken while she was in a green light crosswalk doing ballet back to her ballet studio. 12-year-old purity, innocence. Another young girl was with her that witnessed the whole thing and is suffering right now tragically. We're not the only ones that this happens to. Recently, in Manhattan Beach, a young man's life was taken, 17-year-old, 17 and a half year old gentleman by the name of Ron Levy. They were victims of the Palisades fires and relocated to Manhattan Beach. As a man who's lost his daughter, I have no ego. I'm ego-free now. So I apologize if what I'm about to say to the council is abrupt. But the one thing that differentiated Manhattan Beach from our community, a community that I love, is that their council put testimonies out to that family on Facebook media and other social media. They reached out to the family. They were humans. And I'm asking you to say, "Preserve Emery's spirit, which was love and kindness." Please, from the top down, reach out, be human. If you were unaware, I apologize. Senator Blake Speer sent us a personal note. Mayor, thank you for the call after our common person in common that we have gave you my contact information. I appreciate that tremendously. It meant a lot. But I do reach out to you folks. Be aware. Take some time. If you're respecting our privacy, I appreciate that. If you were unaware, I apologize. Become aware. It matters. It keeps people going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh Armstrong?
I'm a newer friend of Chalikian's, Josh Armstrong, Cardiff. This affected me really strongly just because I lost a brother when I was 12, and it just really brought it all back up for me. And I just, anyway, there's a video, and I'll just leave it there. You can go and play the video. You can go and play the video.
That's, okay. Thank you. Oh, boy. It's hard to, hard to even talk about.
I just want to say thank you for presenting that. Thank you for having the courage to be here.
And thank you for the beautiful tribute. That was moving, very moving.
And for me to explain, I lost a nephew 20-some years ago in a traffic accident I'll be okay, but it comes back. What can you say? My empathy goes out to you, like, I just words can't describe it. Okay, so we have a long agenda and need to move on, so I, we will, we will continue to fight for Vision Zero and none of us want to see it happen again. Okay, consent calendar?
Here, actually, report from closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm skipping. So if the city attorney will report out from our closed session we had today?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My condolences to the Chalakian family. The city council met in closed session today at 4:30 PM and recessed out of closed session at 6:00 PM on the special closed session calendar. While in closed session, the city council discussed three matters. The first, significant exposure to litigation under the authority of Government Code Section 5495-8, subsection 9D2, two cases. The third matter was closed session conference of legal counsel, existing litigation, authority of Government Code Section 5495-6.9, Hunting, Hunting-Hakey versus City of Encinitas, Superior Court Case 372023004398-CU.Po-NC for North County. While in closed session, the city council took no reportable action on any of the three matters in closed session. And that concludes the closed session report.
Okay. Now, if we can move on to consent calendar, has the public polled any items?
We're actually at changes to the agenda.
Changes, oh, I'm sorry. I skipped by.
No, that's okay.
There aren't any.
There are no changes opposed to agenda, however, Councilmember O'Hara would like to make a request.
Yep. I request that item 10D be bifurcated and that tonight we vote on providing direction and extension of the Jewish Family Services Parking, Safe Parking Agreement. And I believe that I would, I would like to request the council do a continuation on item number one on that amendment to the HAP goals and activities and conduct that as its own separate meeting because I believe that will take this meeting several hours to go through.
And why the bifurcation? Why not continue both to a special meeting?
I'm okay with that. I know that the Jewish Family Services is a time-sensitive matter. It's about continuing their, their, their contract and I think that's a very simple discussion. And the timing on that matter, we have to get it done today. I believe the HAP goals and activities portion of this is going to take us, well, it could be its own meeting by itself easily.
Yeah. And would you be, are you suggesting we don't hear it at all and, and therefore we don't take any testimony on it or?
I, I would like to bifurcate it so that all testimony, all hearing about it is based on the item two, the Jewish Family Services Safe Parking Agreement and that we table, for lack of a better word, all amendments and discussion about the HAP to its own special meeting.
To its own special meeting?
Yeah, I think that is the best way to get the best result. It's for everyone to be heard and for us to, to cover this extensive agenda.
I, I agree. There's a lot to talk about. What's the pleasure of the council? Any other comments? Do you have any mayor lines?
I, I'm not sure that the, considering of one item of the Homeless Action Plan separately is a full discussion without the whole Homeless Action Plan discussion. I understand the sensitivity of a really full agenda, but I, I think there's value to the broader discussion, so I, I don't see the value in that. I'm kind of leaning...
It's listed as two separate items on the agenda. Staff, staff, staff identifies it as two separate items. Recommended action, item one and item two.
I hear that.
So they are two separate, although on the same agenda item piece.
Yeah, my point is that hearing all the comments together tonight, people are here anticipating speaking, I think that would be a preferred way forward.
Okay, well, we have to continue on at 10 o'clock and we can review this conversation at 10 o'clock because we won't be here yet.
Yeah.
Are the council members preferences?
I mean, I would second Jim.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I can go either way with it. I, I think there's a lot here. It might take two meetings, depending on what we choose to do with it. There's a lot that...
Yeah.
This is, oh, sorry.
Well, since we're talking about it, there's, you know, there's a lot that I want to, I want to adjust about it and there's a lot of stuff that's, that's missing of our current situation. So I'd be okay with moving it to its own special meeting, but I'm not sure we're gonna fit it in with all the other special meetings we already have through June, so that's the only question I have.
I think this is a huge issue. We have a lot on our plate today. I'm assuming there's gotta be, we already have the Youth Commission, we got a lot going on right now and I definitely feel like with the, I guess, not even a time constraint, this is, this is like a really big topic, so I think that it would require its own...
And I think I considered it a very big topic and probably taking far more than two hours.
100%.
And so my thought was we would start the discussion and in all likelihood, I was assuming we would end up continuing it to get to the other two items after it. So the question is, would the council entertain taking testimony tonight and having some minimal direction, potentially even concluding some action on the safe parking lot recommendation to staff? Because basically, we're giving direction to staff and then we could continue it either, probably wouldn't be date certain. It would probably have to be, if we do a special meeting, we'd have to figure out when that meeting could occur, typically like a four o'clock before our six o'clock meeting. But I don't, I'm not sure two hours would be enough for this, quite frankly. So, so my thought was take it in two bites and do some tonight, keeping an eye on the clock, not going too late and leaving enough time we can handle the, the, the two items afterwards. I'm hoping that the, the two council-initiated items, 12A, 12B, will be fairly quick, but they're still gonna take, you know, 20 minutes to a half hour each, right?
If that's a substitute motion, I'd be in favor of that.
I'll, I'll make it that way and that way we can do some bite, some of the apple tonight, address. It's in spirit what you're asking for, I think, Councilmember O'Hara.
I think what I don't want to have happen, A, I want the testimony that we hear from our residents to be relevant and not get lost. And I do worry that people come here and speak today, when we go back and talk about it a week from now, two weeks from now, that won't be on the table. I do worry about that. I do, I do want to make sure that we vote on the Jewish Family Services Safe Parking Agreement because it is time-sensitive and I think that is something we should be sensitive to since we don't have a continuation date on this.
Okay. And I think that's a fair comment and we'll, the body will take it into consideration at the time and, and I think that's an admirable goal to boot, personally. So I'll make it a motion. It sounds like I've got a second for a substitute motion.
There's no, there was no motion on the floor yet?
Oh, was, was there no second on?
He did, Jim did make a motion.
Okay, in that case, I'll make it a motion that, that we still hear it, but with a possibility and option for us continuing and then with the goal of making a vote on the safe parking lot tonight, taking an action of the safe parking lot at a minimum tonight. And then I think I've got a second for that.
Correct.
Any substitute motion on the other way or any other action? It's up to you. So I think, I think we're kind of hitting the, so with that, call the question.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
Takes us to the consent calendar.
Any other changes to the agenda tonight? I'm not seeing any. Let's move on to consent calendar.
No items have been, have been removed by the public.
Anybody want to remove anything?
Yes. Is anybody from the Youth Commission here? Okay, so I'm gonna pull item 8D.
Okay.
And 8J.
8D as in dog and 8...
J as in Jim.
Okay. Any others? I'll entertain a motion to approve the remaining consent calendar items.
Motion to approve remaining consent items.
I'll second.
Okay, I got motion to second.
Motion carries unanimously. Takes us to item 8D, which is Youth Commission appointments for the 2025-26 school year. We did, we did advertise for the vacancies, which there are nine commissioners for the Youth Commission. We only received eight applications. So the mayor was recommending appointment of those eight applicants and then once council takes action tonight, we will reopen to fill the one remaining vacancy.
So questions or?
No, I just, I wanted to take the opportunity to, to mention how important I think it is for this, this particular group of people to be involved. You know, this is who we do what we do up here for. It's who eventually down the road, we're gonna hand off whatever, whatever gets created by our community and by us up here. And I want to take a moment to, who do we have here? Elizabeth Christensen of La Costa Canyon. Go ahead and stand up, please. Sarah Charles of SDA, Go Mustangs. Anybody else here? So I, I think obviously we haven't voted on this item yet technically, but we are going to be placing these people on our Youth Commission. And I think it's huge that you get up here and do this. I know all of us up here appreciate all of you. We want to invite you to our office to come in for a meeting. We'd love to meet with all of you, your commission, but more importantly, we applaud your investment in the future. And I thought it was really important to not just vote you in, but to point you out as being stellar examples of what we, what we'd love to have in our youth.
Stellar is the understatement. I, you know, I didn't have anywhere near this kind of background when I came out of high school, so congratulations. I think all the candidates are fantastic, whether it's the girls' state or, you know, and I, I did want to mention the one, Sarah, I think you, you missed the deadline last year. I flunked my algebra final going into high school. It was the best lesson I ever learned in, in going into college. So I made up the time, I caught up. So missing something occasionally, good lesson. So hang in there and, and congratulations, well, not yet prematurely. We're gonna vote and then you should be on the, you both will be on the Youth Council along with the other, the all, what is it? Seven, eight?
And then we'll advertise. And just so the council is aware, when we did have the recommendation to appoint them, I did notify all of them that it was not required that they attend tonight, that there were not gonna be interviews, so.
And we appreciate you coming, so.
Very much.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion to second. Call the question.
Just one moment, sorry. Sorry, systems frozen just for a second. Give me a moment.
This is where we have to wait for the computer to catch up. Yeah, technology, yeah.
And that motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And that takes us on to 8J? The UFAK work plan?
Good evening, council members, as well as Mayor Bruce Ellers. I am Melissa Lane, the Administrative Support Coordinator for the Public Works Department. And I have here with me tonight is our UFAK Chair, Brad Leffkowitz, as well as the City Arborist, Chris Crossdon, and as well as our Public Works Director, Sylvester Mabry. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Brad.
All right, hello. Do you need a staff report for this or?
I, I don't. I'm happy to take a staff report, but I don't need one.
It's up to you, I mean.
No.
No, okay. So, so you have questions or comments?
I'm, so we're looking at a work plan here and I'm reading the work plan and researching our committees, our commissions, the, what we have in the city going forward. And as committees, unless they can establish, unless they establish a need, generally tend to come into their, their work and the end. And up here recently, we've brought in an arborist that we all agree is very good. We've got a new tree ordinance coming and we've got a staff who is well-aware and voiced in this discussion, in this area of our ordinances and pieces like that. And when I look over the work plan, I look at our environmental, on top of that, our Environmental Commission. And I look at all of these items and I believe they can be dropped into any of those, many of those categories, whether it's the Environmental Commission, whether it's staff, whether it's our arborists. And in the pursuit of making sure we are efficient with the allocation of staff time, budgeting and work, I believe that this committee has come, has come to its end. In fact, I think the fact that we have an opening on it that's been open and no one has even bothered to apply for it for six months is kind of a testament to that. I spoke with the, with the person who left the, the exit, who exited the commission and made the spot, the committee made the spot open. And I was advised that the reason that person left was because the committee is not doing That is a quote. So, so I kind of, I'm not sure if this, I, I think, I think city council should consider whether this committee has just come to the end of its need, as all committees are supposed to.
Mm-hmm.
to.
So, and I don't know as far as, I lost Tarquin, but as far as that being on the agenda tonight, I don't think we can take that kind of action tonight. And I waited for Tarquin to leave the room to ask him a question, so.
We're looking at their work plan.
The, the, we're looking at the work plan for the UFAK and is that within the purview tonight to talk about whether we continue and, and nullify the work plan, so to speak, or, uh, or merge it? I think one other proposal on the table was to merge it into, uh, other commissions, other commission or commissions.
Is the UFAK on the, itself on the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. And since it's on the agenda, is it fair game to talk about, we're talking about their work plan.
Right.
So we can talk about.
You can talk about it. It's peripheral to the work plan.
Okay, okay. So, um, yeah, I, I'm actually open to this idea. I, I, as you recall from our, uh, goal setting session, my goal was to get each of the commissions, our commissions correlated to one or more of the, uh, elements of our general plan to get the city focused back on our general plan, because that's the document we all follow. There isn't a UFAK element, and I do view it as either it belongs in parks and rec or whether it's in resource management or environmental commission, or possibly it could be a subcommittee, uh, a joint subcommittee of multiple commissions made up of the commissioners, but then they would give more for whichever, wherever we put it. We could decide it tonight or we could, uh, agree to agendize this topic directly in a future and get staff recommendation on how they would organize it. But I, I do fundamentally agree that in Robert's rules, you send, uh, you send work to the subcommittee and subcommittees are supposed to be time limited and have a purpose statement. And this has been ongoing and the question is, it has been hard to, to keep filled. So it's not that we're saying that the function doesn't need to be done, but, uh, we, we have options in front of us. We can consider augmenting one of the other commissions with maybe a couple extra members and having a subcommittee of that commission be the UFAK, if you will. But then their regular meetings would be agendized in with whatever the main commission was. So I'm, I'm open to the idea, but I think we, I think I, it's probably more discussion than I'd like to do tonight, given our heavy agenda. So I've got, uh, Deputy Mayor Lines.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm fairly familiar with this committee and it is a committee, not a commission. Um, I do follow the work that they're doing and the progress that they've made. There are some very key tasks that they are tasked with. Uh, one has to do with, uh, the, the health of the trees in our community. And this is very centered on public works and what public works does. We have hundreds of trees in our community and this focused emphasis on tree canopy, tree health, I think, still remains to be a very valid effort for us. Also, this committee, uh, reviews the applications for heritage trees. And I know a lot of the community has gained a lot more interest in heritage trees and preserving our unique and valuable trees throughout the community. Um, you know, I don't mind a separate conversation on the pros and cons if, if that's the majority's pleasure. Um, I think that would be valuable. I don't know that we, as a consent item, really have expected to have this kind of discussion today. I think that the, um, the value has been there for me. One thing that I did, that we did on the environmental commission is we kept track of the things that we did and we reported back to city council on those things that we achieved each year. If we're wondering about that regarding this committee, I think it would be a valuable suggestion to say, let's track, um, let's look at this for a year and track what their, what the work plan is and how, what they're achieving. Um, that would be something we could bring forward and then evaluate it as we go along. I know that this city council has had some structural questions about committees versus commissions. So if, if there's a better way to organize, I'm, I'm happy to be involved in that dialogue. Um, I would just request that we have this as an item that we give more attention to than just under this consent item today.
And then just for a little added clarity, this was a little different than typical committees. This one is actually established in the municipal code. So just for council's clarification, so we would, um, the direction you give would also be to amend the municipal code to reflect whatever actions you take.
I believe that would elevate it to a higher level of discussion. I'll defer to the mayor on that.
Hi. Councilmember Shaffer.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm going to ask, uh, the committee themselves and then actually really I want to start with Sylvester and, and, you know, from our cities, uh, your work and what your thoughts are on where we, we might go with this.
Well, I feel that they're very valuable, the committee, to the public works department. They advise on everything regarding the urban forest. Uh, as far, like, uh, Deputy Mary Line said, our heritage trees, they, they review applications, uh, they look at, uh, city policies and advises our arborists on best practices as far as urban forest management is concerned. So they're very well needed.
Cool.
And, um, their value to our public works department.
Thank you, Sylvester. And then anything either one of you want to add to?
Chris Crosston here, City Arborist. I, I just want to echo what Sylvester is saying. They play an important role in acting as, I know the best word here is a stopgap, but they're an additional level of protection that the trees have when it comes to large, larger tree removals, because those are some of the ones that we bring to them for advice on. They provide oversight on that and seeing that we're, we're making the right decisions, we're doing them based on science, we're not just cutting down trees. So from that perspective, uh, I held a high value. I've been with the committee since the beginning as a liaison, bringing items to them back and forth. And yes, people have come and gone, there's people that are still there, some people left because they termed out and they did not want to leave. So they, they really provide an, in my opinion, an important connection to the community as it pertains to trees.
Awesome. Thank you. And Brad, anything?
Yeah, I would just say as a matter of what's coming up, the mature tree ordinance was recently sent back to the drawing board and, um, that's going to be probably the bulk of our work for the foreseeable future. There's been a lot of community involvement on that and people wanting to show up and it's a good conduit for community engagement on that specifically. Um, so I'd like to see where that goes at the least. Um, that's certainly top of mind for, for what we're going to be working on. Um, and I could see revisiting it after we've gotten that through, through the works. I'm not sure how long it's going to take, but it's an important one.
Awesome. Thank you, gentlemen, really appreciate it. Um, I, I think it's important to, to get, you know, their, their interpretation of this and, and where we go from here. It's people that want to do for our city and, uh, at this point, I would make a motion to approve and push forward. And if we wanted to find it a little further or further conversation, um, I'm for that. Uh, if there's something specific that we want them to do, like you just said, the mature tree ordinance is back at them. Um, and, uh, I'm just happy that there's people in our community that are willing to do this, you know, for free and, and come and, and do this. So if they're willing to help out and, and put their best effort forward, then I'm all for it. So unless there's a real good reason to not have them, other than, I mean, what, they use a little bit of light, use a, a room to help us, doesn't seem like a major benefit to, to remove them at this point, especially if it requires us to change our ordinance.
I will second that, but could I also ask for a friendly amendment that we ask them to add to their work plan, uh, reporting back to city council on what they're doing and achieving, like how, what they've achieved for that task in, um, for the, for the year or if we want it to be even for six months?
Yeah, I, I'll, uh, yes, I will, um, approve that. For somebody that, again, growing up here, you know, Lucadia, all of Sandy Ghetto, there's so many areas that you couldn't see Sandy Ghetto from, from the freeway at one point. And I know that we're, we're supposed to be a city of trees and loving trees and all this stuff, but for some reason we have less trees now than we have, than from what I ever remember. And you really couldn't see much past the five when you were on the five. And now it's pretty much fair game all over up and down the five and, and 101 and everywhere we go. So I know there's a, a replacement, it takes years, you know, decades for trees to be fully grown, but, um, I'd, I'd prefer NCIS to look more, more like it used to at one point with trees and, and all the stuff that we had. So, um, I'm appreciative of it, so. Motion's on the floor.
Council, we got motion in a second. Councilmember O'Hara.
Yeah. I'm still looking at their work plan here and I'm, I'm trying to find out a space where one of you can tell me that staff can't do this work plan. Our arborist and our arborist contract that we paid a lot of money for recently, um, is designed to do a lot of these things. As far as knowing species of trees, I would expect our arborist to be able to do that. Um, as far as covering our, uh, parking lots with shade, um, it, it didn't seem to help us in our discussion with Mr. Grover on his, um, El Comunal project where he just mowed down trees and you weren't happy about it.
No.
Um, so I'm, I'm looking for a way to effectively take this job description and fold it into, into a place where it can be more effective. At the current time, I think this needs to be redone drastically. Um, I, I think if anything, our arborist should be reporting to the city or Mr. Sylvester, head of our public work, should be reporting to the city if they're creating actions. Um, I would like to see that happening. I would like to forward look at whether, uh, this is a committee, um, and there's probably several in, in the city, uh, that can be folded into other committees or be, uh, more efficiently, um, put, put to work so we get better results. Um, because that's what we're after here. Like, it's great if we look at, uh, enhancing the city's existing parking lot shading, but we don't get it and that doesn't matter. I want the shading. I don't want us to just look at it.
Gotcha.
Um, so how do we do that? How do we make that happen? And that's why I'm looking for this change. Um, and I'm, and I'm, I'm, you know, it's a, it's a debate. I'm not catching people off guard here, but I think a committee does have a time, timeline. Maybe it's time to start over on this, I don't know. Or maybe it's time to fold it into other commissions.
I'm, I'm down for a further discussion if that's something, I know you want to, um, just, I'm just listening to Sylvester, who's the department head and, um, I'm a trust but verified type person and I have to trust that, you know, the words coming out of his mouth are, he needs it, he appreciates it, it, it does things for him that, um, again, we're not paying for it. So the fact of the matter is, is the gentleman that's in charge of our, our city and, and everything that happens to do that says that it's necessary. So that's where I, I reside in and my full faith and trust in Sylvester alone, so that's where for me.
And Councilmember O'Hara, were you done?
Uh, no, but I can respond to that. Um, what was the last contract we signed here for arborists?
How much, you mean?
Was it 1.1 million for arborist services?
Oh, West Coast Arborists.
We, we have numerous contracts, of which I'm actually still waiting for a report on all of those arborist services that I have not received. Um, and, um, we're paying a lot of money for arborists around the city and this seems like a lot of these are jobs that they should be doing.
The last contract that we signed was for West Coast Arborists. And the analysis that you requested, it's completed and it will be coming your way shortly.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'll, I'll yield for the moment.
Okay. Um, then I'm up next. So, um, I, I'm not ready. I, I don't know that I want to change. I also think there are quite a few people that are not in the room that would be very, very upset if we tried changing anything tonight. I think of former Mayor Sheila Cameron, uh, who has been protecting ficus trees and other trees, lots of trees in here, and, and she would want to be here speaking and this didn't even come near the radar. So I, I, I'm not for doing any major change tonight. I do have a question, which is report back on results, which I agree with fundamentally. Are we talking about retroactively, so last year's results get reported? Uh, uh, you know, maybe compiled and reported, or are you looking for going forward, so the next time we get the report? And that's the question. And I don't yield yet, but, um, who, whose motion was it?
Since it was my, um, friendly amendment, uh, I would, I would be open to either of those. If you, if you're interested in a backward looking, um, report, I think that could probably be put together, although since they didn't have it on their radar, I, I, I'll defer to you guys with that. But you probably, based on your meeting minutes, you know what you were able to achieve. But, um, I would be actually more interested in it as we move forward, um, to document what they're achieving.
So maybe the, the answer for the friendly amendment was both, that, that we'd love to have a, a retrospective for the last year and then also plan on it going forward, assuming it still exists, that, uh, that UFAK would report back each year with results from the prior year, just like the other, uh, commissions do. So I thi, I think I got my, my question answered. The comment, I think, Luke, you made about, uh, less trees, I, I couldn't agree more. I look at 101, I look at, uh, just the sound, when I was walking neighborhoods all around SDA, I was amazed, once you got over the hill, how there, there isn't anything absorbing sound. So trees do more than just sightline, they do energy absorption of, of road noise and that type of stuff. So, um, I would like to understand the bigger picture of how do we make our protection of trees more, uh, more, uh, effective? And that's part of the reason, now, we're balancing stuff, right? And we got a lot of public input, I think we all did, of business owners saying, hey, what, what we were discussing for a mature tree ordinance would potentially have the opposite effect, much like the effect we're seeing out there today. So we push that back to UFAK in particular to go back and look at that and see if there's a better balance and, and if we want to move forward with a mature tree, because the ultimate goal, I think everybody agrees, is to enhance and, and ensure or, uh, cultivate the canopy and have more large trees. But where it was, was going to be a flawed ordinance and I would rather hold off and wait and get, get a proper ordinance. So in my opinion, for this foreseeable future and probably six months, maybe even the full year, I think we've given this committee a goal in, in putting the mature tree back there. Uh, I think they have their, uh, goals here and I'm okay with that. So I, I would support the motion today, but I would also support a further discussion properly notified of, hey, do we want to change the organization of how this UFAK function is, uh, committed or, you know, in with the other, uh, commissions? And, but that would be a future agenda item, so. Deputy Mayor Lines.
Um, I know our, our city clerk is looking at us. But, but I did want to add one thing and, and another reason why I think this deserves a, a bigger discussion at another time to be agendized as an action item, is that if we're talking about removing a volunteer group, if we are, and I don't know that we are, but maybe part of the dialogue, then I think we need to look at our, our contracted arborist services to see how that might impact the cost of the work. Because if we, if, um, Sylvester, if you're getting some free work from local experts in the committee that's now going to become part of our consulting arborist services, that will affect their scope of work and that may actually cost the city more money.
Absolutely. I agree with that and they are extra resource that we appreciate.
That's all I needed to say.
Okay, and I'm, I'm going to, I, I forgot to look to see if we had, since we pulled it, but we apparently have gotten one public request, so we'll take public comments right now.
Christine Schindler.
So Christine Schindler, Easton Sinidis. So I just put in a slip because I didn't know where this was going to go. So, um, it's been interesting watching this new council and, uh, process. So I don't think I've ever seen, um, council members fill out oral communications and speak from the dais. You guys are doing that. The number of consent items that are pulled by council members, that's more than I've seen. You guys are doing that. Uh, council initiated agenda items and then wanting to push off a agenda item to another time so that you can get to your council initiated items. So, um, this for me, uh, this discussion brings me back to the very first council, um, meeting that, uh, Councilmember Jim was at for the school district liaison meeting that has shades of that. Councilmember Luke, thank you. Thank you for asking, um, not so much for a report, but for the opinion of staff. Um, and I'm happy to hear what Sylvester had to say about this committee. Appreciate Kathy giving us a reality check about municipal code, like how the discussion, um, came, you know, came through. Um, so it's just, it's, it's kind of, some of these discussions are just very, very oddly shaped. I don't even know how to put it. I don't even know how to put it. But I appreciate yourself and the mayor speaking about the importance of tree canopy, tree health, the heritage tree, all of this, I think is very important for our community, for public health, for environmental issues, for a lot of different reasons, climate action. So I'm glad that it sounds like this committee is going to go forward. You may have some more discussion, but I did poll it because I just did not know why Councilmember Jim was pulling it. So thank you so much.
Mayor, we do have one additional speaker, Kathleen Lees.
Okay. Do we have a third? No, okay. Just checking.
Clearly, I'm not prepared, but I do have something to say because I'm on the Lucadia Town Council. I'm not representing them tonight, but we have been fighting for as long as I've lived in Encinitas to get the tree canopy, which Encinitas, especially Lucadia, is famous for, the tree canopy. I remember as a child, about seven years old, driving along the hot beach and all of a sudden you're just in this beautiful, gorgeous, cool, oh, it's just heavenly. It's like you're in a magical place. So that, the transit district won't let us plant any more trees in their portion. So we only get the ones that we have there now. And every single ditch digging project we've had, they wreck our trees. And we have always come to the city, we've gone to Public Works, we've gone to anybody we could who would help us protect the trees because there's no way that they can protect themselves. And this time, this, just these last few weeks, we have seen the fences that are required go up around most of the trees and the signage that's required by contract go up around the trees. We have never seen this happen before. And I just want to get up and say thank you very much to the council and to Mrs. Campbell for the effort that's gone into it because I'm not standing here alone, I'll tell you. Everybody is pulling. Last night at our Lucadia Town Council meeting, they said, oh, Kathleen, don't do that anymore because we're never going to get that. It's, the city just doesn't care. They're never going to support us. It's never going to happen. Just, you know, we'll work on what we can get done. Well, that doesn't work for me. I want, I may never, I'll never see it because I won't live long enough for those trees to grow. But we can't give up on our trees. They're just too important to the quality of our life, to the environment that we live in and all of the things that are going wrong. And if one person is unhappy with what's going on at a committee, it only means that they weren't doing what he's interested in. It doesn't mean the committee isn't doing anything. So I just, this is really disturbing to even consider giving up. It took forever to get that in place and the work they've done has drug on because nobody seems to really care. Everybody hallows the trees, but they don't actually do anything about it. Until very recently, we've seen some shining light and I'm really grateful for that. So thank you.
Thank you.
We can have one additional speaker. Natalie Satin.
Hi, Natalie Satin Cardiff. I had an email exchange with Sylvester on April 29. I live in Park Place and there was a tree that was approved. Jennifer knows about this. I have actually sent this, videos of this to the council. Hopefully you all have had the opportunity to see them. So I am not sure what happened, but they came through on Park Place. We are, apparently, we have like a one-inch area where we can shear off and then anything over the one-inch has to go out to the arborist. There was a video taken and it was at least 10 to 12 inches and I just wanted to let Sylvester know, we have this video. You wrote a reply to me saying it was less than an inch. So Tony, my neighbor, went back out and took a second video of the tree. The tree is absolutely sheared to holy hell. It looks terrible. So I'm not sure what we're doing and we're spending our money on, but a million dollars and we're not checking to see what we're going on with the tree. Every one of you have this video that I sent. We saw the before, the after. I don't know what we're doing. Thank you so much, Jim, for mentioning a million dollars for this. This is crazy. I'm sorry, but I don't trust Sylvester with his response. You all are copied on this response. I'm not sure what's going on with our arborist. I'm not sure what's going on with Sylvester, but this is not okay with what's going on with our trees here. So you all claim to love the trees. Come to Park Place on Evergreen and look at the state of this tree. So thank you so much for pulling this item, Jim, and not rubber stamping what's going on in our city. Thank you. I'm sorry, Luke. I appreciate that you trust him. Come look at the tree and see if you trust him. Thank you.
So.
That concludes speakers.
That concludes it? Okay. As far as, tonight, we're just talking about the work plan, really? And I do want to get moving, so we do have a second and.
So I just want to make an appearance. It is because we care about the homeless people that we are going to be talking about under the HAP and getting the results for them as well as our residents and our businesses. And I don't want to rush through that. I want to make sure we have enough time to do that because that is so important and it's not about rushing to the next item. And I am disappointed if it came off that way, but it is absolutely not that. It is because we care so much about this item that we want to move it forward to a different day. And I'll just add in that with the tree ordinance, the tree ordinance was brought to council. And I don't know if you remember, but I spearheaded sending it back to council, back to staff to put more teeth into it, to protect our trees. And that's what I'm looking to do here. What do we do to make the pieces that we have more effective to get the outcomes to protect our trees? Because as I pointed out to Councilmember Schaefer, we didn't, we weren't unable to protect our trees the last time it came up in front of us. The new tree ordinance was not substantial enough and we sent it back. And by the way, that one previously, when it came to us, had been viewed by the UFAK committee. So how do we make this more effective? How do we make a more effective tree ordinance? How do we protect our trees so that they don't get, keep getting cut down in exchange for the dollars the developers are willing to give us or because we are having problems keeping them healthy or whatever? Because we're not doing it right now.
And I think everybody up here supports improved tree canopy. I have never heard any of us say anything about that. And I think the goal, first of all, we want to keep moving forward on the UFAK and on the mature tree ordinance and come to something that's feasible. And then number two, we will consider structural changes as necessary, not to get rid of the function, but to make it more effective and potentially, and we could expand it in the future and we could talk about how we have done tree management, get a little more in-depth about what the history says has happened to mature trees in Encinitas. I think we'll see quite a few examples where they got cut down and they hopefully were justified, but it might be worth the investigation in the future, not tonight. So I do have a motion and second. Was your motion with the friendly amendment?
Your motion?
With the amendments.
With your amendment as well.
With the amendment to have both a retrospective status of what they did last year and then also, you know, should they come to a conclusion of this work plan, I'll see. Do it as standard practice going forward, once a year.
So we're not going to.
It's my understanding.
For future discussion?
That was my question.
That wasn't in the, I think we can agendize that ourselves. We don't have to have a motion for that. If you read it back, just to be clear.
Yeah, so the motion I have is to approve the Urban Forest Advisory Committee Fiscal Year 2025-26 annual work plan and direct the committee to report back to the city council. Did you want it in six months?
No. What we said is we.
So report back on.
Report back on last year's results.
Of the prior year outcomes.
And plan, and plan on doing the same annually when they update the work plan.
Correct, like the rest of the commissions.
Just like the other commissions.
I believe this is their first work, official work plan, so that's why they don't have the typical report like commissions.
And I would like to add that, to bring it back to council, Councilmember San Antonio's recommendation.
Can, why don't we handle that in a separate motion, just real quick? Let's get this one done, voted on. I'm trying to make progress here.
Yeah, I just don't want it to not come back. We talked about things coming back, but if we don't put it on the record, it doesn't always happen.
Well, we can do it, just hold on one second, do another motion. So we write it back. I've got, good, call a question.
Motion carries with Councilmember O'Hara voting now.
And so now, Jim, you have the floor. Go ahead and let us know, what motion would you, what action do you want taken?
I just want to motion our clarity that it will come back. We've said we're going to bring a few things back and they haven't come back and there hasn't been a date set for some of them. So we're going to bring it back, let's make it official.
So what, tell me what action you want us to reconsider, just so we have it and we can give it to staff and clear.
Motion to consider effectiveness of this committee. If changes need to be made to it specifically going forward or if duties it can do or that it is currently doing can be absorbed by other areas where we are staffed, spending money or whatever in that regard. So otherwise, we're back here next year having the same conversation, right? Or we'll risk it, I should say. Hopefully it won't be.
And do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. And do we have discussion? Call a question? Okay, call a question. Thank you. And thanks for clearly stating that. I think that helped, it helped me.
Sure.
I apologize to everyone, but Kathy, can you read it back?
So what I had was to bring back report regarding the, sorry, I had something else written down, regarding the effectiveness of the committee and if the committee's structure can change to be incorporated into other commissions.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. And that is my report.
Did we get the results on that? What was, it didn't flash up for me.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay.
So item 10A.
Moving on to 10A.
So item 10A is to hear from applicants for the Housing Authority. The council will be making two appointments to the Housing Authority for the tenant commissioners. This is for two, for two members and it's for a full two-year term. And then also hearing from applicants for the Public Health and Safety Commission to appoint one commissioner to fill an unscheduled vacancy with a term ending March 2026.
And my recollection is, in both these cases, it's a mayor-appointed process.
The mayor makes a recommendation and then the council.
Council votes on it.
Yes. And then in the case of the Housing Authority, there are no term limits for that in particular. With the other commissioners, they have two consecutive term limits.
Okay.
So what I'm going to do is we're going to start with the Housing Authority tenant commissioner applicants. I'm going to call you up and you would have three minutes. Julie Becker, are you here? Is Julie Becker here? Okay, I did not hear from her. So we'll hear from Richard Glanzman, followed by Lou Moller, and then Janice Williams. Barbara Nichols had withdrawn her application.
This is not my forte, so be patient with me. I've done this once before. My name is Richard Glanzman. I've been a resident of Encinitas since 2002, third of my life. Five years ago, I spoke in front of this council, totally different members, totally, regarding affordable housing and the Section 8 program. I wasn't part of it yet. I am now. It was a long waiting list of 12 to 15 years. I've been here 20, so I saw the application and I wanted to at least express my interest in being a part of things. I'm really grateful and thankful for the program, but I think it needs some direction from participants. My background and my career has been in real estate, whether it be commercial, consumer, rental, leasing, purchasing, been my background. I've seen the Section 8 program through my mother's eyes, who lived 85 years, and she transferred out here from Colorado with her Section 8 to follow me and her granddaughter. And she was ever so grateful for her Section 8. Her income was extremely limited to Social Security, under a thousand a year, a month. And, you know, we all know Social Security COLAs only go up by 2%, 3% if we're lucky. So you can imagine what her limited ability to pay for things was. She was always frightened, not frightened, but leery about the annual reviews and the requirements that they placed on tenants and it seemed like the limited requirements they placed on landlords. Her biggest fear that the program wouldn't meet the rental requirements as the years passed and she passed before that ever came to, but I'm facing her biggest fear now. I've been on the program for two years and rents in Encinitas over the last 20 years, probably forever, have been outrageous. I think the average rent now for a one-bedroom is $29.50. I'm paying more than that. I don't think the landlord's quite following the rules. But Section 8 didn't raise its standard payment voucher amount this year and the Tenant Protection Act allows it to raise by 10, up to 10%. So I think in the next year or two, I'm going to be facing a program that can't help me anymore and I have no place to go. I mean, I make less than $40,000 in a city that averages $150,000. I see that there's two positions and two incumbents and I just found out there's no term limits, so they're applying for their fifth and sixth year. I'm very interested in being a part of things and I'm not an incumbent, but I think term limits, and not in this case, are important. I'd appreciate your consideration in your appointment. I'd be more than appreciative of being a part of it and giving my input and my experience.
Lou? Lou Moller? Oh, here she comes. Followed by Janice Williams.
My name is Lou Moller and this is Rico and we're both grateful to be here. We're grateful beyond words for all your hard work that you do and what you have allowed for my family and myself. I was able to raise my sons and daughter here, who attended San DeGuito and also La Costa Canyon and the San DeGuito School District. I volunteered at the schools and was an integral part and they helped my sons do really well and they will never need help and because of this program, they have become a success. They cannot live in Encinitas because it's too expensive, but they do live in Southern California and I am grateful. So what do I have to bring? Well, I'm returning and I want to continue to give back because you've given so much to me and my family. And I have ties to the community. From '95 to 2013, I had Latte Lou. I was a coffee lady. I was an owner-operator and had a wonderful time of meeting so many wonderful business people, members of the community, teachers, doctors, nurses, gardeners, landscapers, everybody. And so I, and I've been able to maintain many of those contacts even though I'm retired from my coffee business. Second, I volunteered at St. Andrews. And then third, I volunteered at San DeGuito when my kids were there and I was also very active in Pop Warner. So I have real strong ties to the community and I care a lot and I know it's really hard because as a senior, I'm on a really limited income and like the gentleman who spoke before me, I know how scary it is. And it's very scary. But I have lots of good resources and I just want to give back and I want to continue to be part of the community in helping shape other lives. And because I was able to raise my children, I know what young families face in the community and how hard it is for them, as well as what seniors face. Because as a senior, our needs are a little bit different whether you're moving into a place. And so I'm a good voice for that. At one time, I knew about the young people and now I got the chance of knowing about us old folks. And do you have any questions for me or concerns?
So eight years, or eight terms, right? You've been doing it since 2000. You've been doing it since 2009.
Yes.
Any, any comments on term limits or on, you know?
Well, um.
You're quite committed.
I'm committed, I mean, this is my community. I love Encinitas, I love trees, I love people, I love the beach, I love helping out, I love our churches, yoga, I love you guys, I, you know, I just, it's just who I am. And maybe it came from, you know, serving coffee at 5:00 AM in the morning and, you know, and making smoothies, and I adapted to changes in my coffee industry, and even though I've been here a long time, I can adapt to change.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, thanks for your time.
Janice?
Hello, Mayor and everyone. My name is Janice Williams, I live in Cardiff, and I've been here about five years or more. And I've been on the current Housing Authority Board of Commissions for the City of Encinita for about three years. So I agree with this gentleman, there should be a term limit, give someone else a chance to express their views and everything and, and put their, and give their input. Also, well, I work for the Veterans Administration in La Jolla, and it was a great advantage to be able to participate in the program, to be here, because otherwise I wouldn't be able to afford to live here either. And I also enjoy the opportunity to serve on the commission, because while I get to vote on housing agency plans and also get firsthand information on new programs and changes regarding the Housing Authority program, I also get to make suggestions to the program. And homeownership programs, which are various assistant options that help participant homeowners, I mean, participants become homeowners, should be something that they bring back. I know they don't have it anymore, but it was a great idea, and I think it should be going, coming back. So people on the program can make mortgage payments instead of rental payments, and they also can have the opportunity to make payments for certain amounts of, you know, according to their income, to be able to get a down payment. So that would help them participate in that program if it was ever brought back. So, and that probably would free up more vouchers for future participants. Okay, and they can also have the dream of being a homeowner one day, maybe not here, but somewhere. And, well, I enjoy serving and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Did you want to go into the other one, or do you want to vote on this one and then we'll move forward?
Was there any, was there one with a written statement?
Not on this.
Not on this, that was on the Public Health and Safety.
Julie Becker, I just want to make sure, Julie Becker, are you here? Yeah, I never heard back from Julie.
I would say we decide this one and then move on, so I'll, I'll go first with, you know, obviously term limits, we don't have them right now, I think we should consider them in the future. And I know in the case of Janice, you've only served two, you're just going on to your only third, you know? And so I appreciate the service, and when we've met, both, both Lou and Janice have been very good to work with. And Richard, I appreciate your, your volunteering and offering up your services here. These are public meetings, you are welcome to come attend them and just keep track of them, well, I mean, the Housing Authority too, yeah. And so at this time, I'm going to stick with reappointing, recommending, reappointing the incumbents, but I think we should consider next time, so Lou, maybe we'll let you go free after another two years, you know? I forget, I think when you hit 20, you have to retire or something, certainly should do that with mayors. So, but, so that, that's my proposal, is go with the incumbents on this one. And Councilmember O'Hara?
I'll second that. I, I want to touch the idea of term limits, and I do think we should go forward with it. I think it's important to note that when the Housing Authority last met, when we all met, at the time, the Housing Authority and its members were meeting every five years. And so it was possible that during some of your time as a, on the Housing Authority, you didn't even have to show up, right? So we, we've changed that to every year, and I feel like this becomes a much more important position for these people. And it is something that I think because they meet every year, it does make sense to put term limits on it. I view somebody like Mr. Glanzman as somebody who we should invite to be active in any area we can, we can find space for somebody like you in this, in the city, like where your interest is, whatever the area is. And so I, I do support your recommendation, I think I'd like to look at term limits so that somebody like Mr. Glanzman gets a chance to take this opportunity. But Mr. Glanzman, I want you to know that, I'm going to speak to everybody up here in this case, but we want you to stay involved and, and come up to join, look at joining a commission or, or something that pops up that you feel you can add to, or just reach out to your council member and, and come by our office. Or you can come by my office, I'd love to meet with you. So, so that's, that's, I'm going to second the motion, and I just wanted to touch on that because I think it's important, everybody who comes up here and volunteers to be part of this very important commission is, is.
And just to be clear, I don't think it's a motion to second, or is it? So I make a motion and then they second it? Okay, thank you. Schaefer?
I'm going to rebuttal that, and saying, I think that, I appreciate all the applicants, I think, Lou, I really appreciate your time and all your energy and the years you've put in. Very active volunteer. I personally, if we want to talk term limits, let's, you know, I'm more, it's put up right now. And, you know, she's been here for eight years, I think there's other areas to continue to volunteer. I would love to see fresh blood come in here, and I'd love to see Richard make, make that list, and Janice would be my recommendation as of right now. Nothing, you know, nothing against all the applicants that, that put themselves out here, but I think it's, I think turning over more people that can be involved and get a chance to see a part of the city, it just, it makes our community stronger. You know, it just moves it along, if that makes sense, so that's what I'm, over there.
Any other comments?
No, I would second Bruce's motion as well. I would, I mean, I would, I'm for you.
Okay. And any comments?
No additional, no.
Additional comments?
Okay, so I think, I think it looks like I see consensus, so should we just call the question at this point?
Motion carries unanimously, and if we do bring back term limits, we can talk about some of the challenges that are different with the Housing Authority versus our commissions, because the Housing Authority is not open to at large, you have to be a Section 8 participant, one of them has to be over 62, and so that's why sometimes they've been consistently appointed, because sometimes there was only one person that was over 62, 62 or over, so those are just some of the challenges we can discuss.
Okay. Okay, let's.
And then.
Yeah. So we'll move, move on to the Public Health and Safety Commission applicants, which we have, what, one position open?
We have one position, it's to fill an unscheduled vacancy, and we do have six applicants. One applicant, Anthony Yost, did send an email to you, he is out of town, but he did send an email stating his, that he's still interested. Tom Cousins did withdraw his application. So the first three applicants that I'll call up, Steve Meche, Sergio Mora, and then Brett Pearson. Is Steve here? I don't see Steve. Sergio is here? Sergio will be followed by Brett Pearson, Alexander Riley, Alex, are you here? Don't see him. Christopher Seneca? You have the next.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public and city staff, my name is Sergio Mora, and I am applying for a position in the Public Health and Safety Commission. You know, I attend two of these meetings a month in my professional life, and I, I like your style much better, so, yeah. I've been a resident of Lucadia, District 1, for about 50 years, just short of 50 years, 49 years, 11 months and about 22 days, but who's counting, right? You know, there are many reasons why, but in listening to the public tonight, I mean, it's, it's just obvious that this community is changing, and smart growth is certainly the way we should approach this. As a resident, as a longtime resident, I, I love the streets of Lucadia, you know, the canopy that was north of Lucadia Boulevard and all those eucalyptus trees, right? I mean, who, who does not love that? But really, the tragedy that was spoken of about earlier, I mean, if that, if that isn't recent enough, I don't know what is. And I think we all know that our community is changing. I've seen it change over the past 50 years. Growth is inevitable, but smart, smart growth is the way to do that. I reviewed, you know, your focus areas and goals, and the first three talk about public safety. I met with Mayor Ayers prior to applying for the commission to really understand what the expectation was and what the roles of a commissioner would be. Also met with your fire chief and had a similar conversation, and I believe that in, in my professional life, I have over 30 years of a public service experience. It gives me a unique opportunity and a unique vision into really how to address some of these issues that have been brought up tonight by all of your residents. In my position in local government, I understand the rules by which a commissioner must behave. I think Mayor Ayers spoke of those earlier today, and I believe I can be an asset based on the leverage that I can bring in with my professional experience in, in local government and public safety, and really my long time in, in residing in Lucadia. You know, it's easy to complain, right? Anybody can do that, but I want to do more than that, because I do complain. I catch myself every morning when I go into Beacons and I see the traffic and all those things, and I remind myself that a, a little bit of Lucadia is better than no Lucadia at all. And I think it's a responsibility of all of us to really hold that dear and try to protect our community as best we can. And I think there's an opportunity for me to, to assist in accomplishing that, certainly with the new direction of council and city administration, it's an opportunity for all of us to move forward and really address these issues in a progressive manner and, and do it wisely, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Brett Pearson, and I'm humbled to be speaking before this council and my neighbors for consideration for appointment of the public cell, for, to the Public Health and Safety Commission. Little about me, I'm 42, I'm a husband and father to my six-year-old son, who's, who's in kindergarten at OPE, and my four-year-old daughter. We have lived in Encinitas for four years now, and we have quickly decided it will be our forever home. Our mayor was accurate in describing Encinitas as paradise, that is why I'm here, but maintaining paradise takes work, and I would certainly rather help than spectate. I've been in the fire service for two decades, I'm currently a captain paramedic. I feel that, I feel that the Public Health and Safety Commission is a perfect place for me to get, to me to help, for me to help given my knowledge, skills, and abilities. I've spent half my career working for an eight-station city department that was heavily driven by local politics, and now currently work for a large county entity that serves 23 cities, very in size and in corporate areas. That said, I am knowledgeable as to how public safety agencies in cities operate. My ethos as a firefighter is centered around public service, attuned to the diverse wants, needs, and desires of the people that I serve. In this position, I'll behave no differently. My mission would be to holistically preserve and enhance the quality of life of all residents and guests of the City of Encinitas. Aside from the business assigned, areas of concern I would like to explore are reducing our exposure to property crimes and crimes of opportunity through heightened community education and heightened law enforcement presence. Ensuring our law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical services remain adequate to support our growing city fueled by developments. I believe that sufficient impact fees should be imposed on for-profit developers to fund this. Addressing our unhoused persons by ensuring compassionate support services are offered, but public, but public substance abuse, negligent fire, wanton property damage, and other public nuisance behaviors are not tolerated. Working with law enforcement, the Traffic Commission to improve traffic safety and awareness measures focusing on pedestrians and juvenile e-bike safety. Continued community education on wildfire readiness and lithium ion battery fires as a growing cause of residential fires. Ensuring our emergency medical service and delivery continues to meet the needs of our changing population. In conclusion, I am here to serve the city as a collective, all of us, all of our residents, all of our current and future residents and our guests. I want to improve what we have while ensuring any and all irrepressible change is done responsibly and with public safety in mind. I believe that paradise change should not be paradise lost, and I'm here to make sure of that. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, Christopher Seneca, I'd like to use my time tonight to focus on how I could help execute your vision for the Public Health and Safety Commission. I had a chance to review the work plan, and I think that the goals are great. I'm drawn to the bullets that say things like identify emerging threats to public safety and provide and encourage coordination among the various city departments. I want to help by offering you specifics like citing the emerging threats or doing an evaluation of the coordination process, but more on that later. I also had a chance to review the wildfire survey results. Obviously, fire safety is top of mind, Fire Safety Awareness Month. We have great people who are working on that, we have amazing firefighters here. I was at the Cardiff Farmer's Market recently and had a chance to meet a firefighter with my son who was doing a demo on how quickly he could get his gear on. It was a great lesson for a toddler on how fast somebody can get dressed. What I also take from the survey, though, is that people are scared despite these capabilities, because we all saw what happened in Los Angeles. I think that we can take these concerns, we can hear them, and then we could message back positively in a way that demonstrates the capabilities that we already have. For instance, the work plan says that we should make crime prevention videos, but they don't have to necessarily be so scary. They can highlight things like the lifeguards who did 2,000 rescues last summer season, or they could say that 75% of our firefighter calls are actually to provide EMS services. People will feel safer if they remember the things that the city is already doing for them. Back to the emerging threats to public safety. Before I moved to Encinitas, I worked on the New York City Joint Terrorism Task Force. I don't see anyone in Encinitas who is worried about threats to outdoor public spaces and securing them, and I think that we should be. I think that we could be doing more to get ahead of safety issues related to drones, and I think that we could have a more obvious security presence related to our schools. These are all areas where my experience as a diplomat focused on national security could be helpful to this commission. I want to close by saying that the last time I was up here afterwards, a funny thing happened. I got a lot of messages from people, they started reaching out, I had a lot of coffees, I got super caffeinated. I talked to all these folks who live in the city who have different beliefs, different ages, different ideas, but we all shared this idea that we like it here and we want to make it better. So I encourage people to continue doing that, to keep finding each other, to keep having those coffees. Find me, I'll have another one, I could use it. I think this is a special place, whether you've lived here 15 minutes or 50 years, so tonight I'm honored to try to make it a little healthier and safer and be a part of it. Thank you.
Let's just double check, and Alex Riley, or Steve Meche? Okay. That concludes the applicants.
Okay, so same process, and Tom Cousins withdrew, right? So we're down to six. Boy, we have a, a wealth of qualified candidates and definitely firefighters, firefighters from LA, from Orange County, from National City, it's, it's like from far away, near and wide, and very qualified. In my mind, one stood out more qualified than many, and that would be Sergio. Sergio, captain down in National, or captain chief down in National City, came up through the ranks, but, but you wanted to be a chief, but you didn't want to give up the ability to go out on calls, so he wrote it into the contract, so he's still a working firefighter while still being chief. But the thing that really caught me was that you achieved a, a ISO rating of one in National City. Now, let me put this in terms we all understand. If we were able to, and not many, very, very few can ever do that, it reduces our insurance rates. So that, having that kind of knowledge and advice to help temper everything we do when we make recommendations, I just, to me, that, that made your, your qualifications in this day and age of fire threats in particular, but all the threats we have, I think you've got the experience. No, I, I know Steve Meche, I know Alex Riley, I know Brett, Brett's a neighbor, I, you know, your, all your records and your resumes are phenomenal. Chris, with your experience in, in terrorism, anti-terrorism, and that, I agree, the more immediate threat right now that, that I am personally interested is wildfire unfortunately, so for today. Now, I will, I will. Now, I will, I will give you the same advice that I got back when I applied for Traffic Commission, and the very first mayor of Encinitas dismissed me summarily. I'm not, I'm not doing that, but I kept at it, and I'm here. So don't give up. Keep, keep applying. I say him too. You know, Alex and Steve have applied for things before too, and probably Brett, I don't know if you have, but I encourage everybody to keep coming back. Anthony Yost, I think he's more of a pharmacist background. He's another Purdue grad, so I, you know, but I didn't pick him for that. So my recommendation is Sergio. So I'll look for a second. And Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah. So, yeah, I, the, I think we need to make another commission. I don't know what commission we're going to make, just with that many people that want to do this and that solid of a background, we need to keep these people around and, you know.
You didn't ask of any of them like trees.
Yeah, right. Whatever commission we need to make to keep people, again, and I think, Chris, again, very, very, very smart. I've met with him. I couldn't say enough for his background, and I think, you know, Sergio is top-notch. I have, my sister knows him well. There's, I think, from all the things that we need and all the things that we've put on Chief Gordon to kind of head up this commission and oversee it, it's a second, it's a brother in the same, in the same right that's just down the street, but works across, you know, the South County. So it gives us that. I think that some of the stuff that Chris brings up might be missing since we have now a fire chief and another firefighter with Stephen already on there and a couple other people on the commission. I would strongly recommend that we, I'm not sure if there's another space or open it up, but I think Chris's background is, is being missed. And because we, you know, obviously, everybody wants to see what's happening right now with fire and the immediate, I don't think that there's enough attention on the knowledge that Chris brings from an international level. I mean, spending, you know, multiple years in Pakistan on anti-terrorists, that there's, you know what I'm saying? You just, you just can't, you don't stumble upon that, and they don't put the dumbest people out there, if that makes sense. I do know that. I have been in those areas, and so I just, I just think that his background and his skill level is something we can't, I don't know if there's a special spot for it, but seriously, there's enough there that our city is probably not seeing. I know Captain Watts, with his task force time, is top secret clearance, you know. I think you had a top secret clearance, right? So, again, they don't just hand those out. And to have that knowledge on a repeated basis, that's where I'll say it there. And again, I think Sergio, obviously, you know, he's got it, right? He's got all the stuff, and he's here, and he's, I think it's what Josh needs and wants, but I'm just going to say that out loud because I want to make sure that we don't overlook exactly what Chris Seneca brings.
And I forgot, 50-year resident, too, in multiple areas of Encinitas, so, but, all right. Council, Deputy Mayor Lines?
I'll, I'll kind of pile on from what Councilmember Schaefer was saying because I hope we can find a place for Chris Seneca sometime. I would, I would favor him in this role today for a lot of the same reasons Councilmember Schaefer said. He brings a unique background to a very important commission. But not only that, I do want to focus on the diversity of all of our commissions. And I would, I would ask my fellow council members and the mayor to consider that our commissions should be composed of people who represent the broad range of thought in our community. If we, if we don't intentionally do that, then sometimes, almost, you know, if we're unintentional about it, we might find that our commissions are very narrow-focused and very narrow-represented. Now, the Public Health and Safety Commission could cover so many things, so it's so hard to have all the different skills represented. So it's, it's tough to do that, but what I see in Chris Seneca is that he bridges that and brings diversity and unique background, which we would benefit from here on this commission. So I'd just like, I'd just like us to consider those members that are already on this commission and look for some diversity of thought when we make this selection, and that would, that would be Chris Seneca for me.
Okay. Councilmember San Antonio?
I do agree with Congressman Schaefer. I mean, Congressman Schaefer. Chris, you're, I mean, you're very well-spoken, your background, wonderful. Brett, again, so much to talk about. You're, I loved your presentation. We do have a lot of firefighters applying for these spots, but I, the reason I think I go back to Sergio is because this ISO rating one is, it's a big deal. This is, it's a huge deal. He's been a firefighter for as long as I've known him. I've known him since I was a young man, and that's a long, long time ago. But just to have the, the wealth of knowledge that he brings from a different department to, to here, to Encinitas, to me, I think it's, it just backs up our already great fire chief. I don't think there's going to be, you know, butting of heads or crossing of swords here. I think it's, it's, it's very mutual that what he brings to the table is beneficial to what we're trying to accomplish. Clearly, we put it in our strategic plan, we put it in our budget, that fire was a really big deal for us here in Encinitas. And what he will bring to the table, to the public health and safety, and I do agree, Joy, you're right, we, our Deputy Mayor Lines, is that we should have a broad range of, you know, diversity of thought, but I still go back to, you know, what we put in the budget, what we put in the budget in our strategic plan. Fire is so important right now in our area that I would be hard-pressed to say not to appoint Sergio.
Councilmember O'Hara?
Honestly, I'm thrilled to be up here looking at a no-loss situation. We have three people who are all, all would be great applicants and great, great participants on this, on this board, this commission, rather. Brett, I've never met you, but it seems like I would, I wish you were my dad. Really enjoyed what you brought up here. And Christopher, I, I believe we have commissions coming available next year that will be of a broader range, and there may be a good time for you to apply for some of those. You know, I don't want to just put every person that comes up with the best person on the available spot. And I look at what we did with the Public Health and Safety Commission. One of the things we did was we tried to really focus on what we were doing when we brought it in and bring it to what the new work plan is for it, which can involve specific projects to their point. They were kind of lost, and I think this involved this, first, looking at the aspect of emergency preparedness. But I also heard Chairman for that Public Health and Safety, Jim, talk about wanting to make sure we still talk about homelessness, and we have people on there who understand it. And we talk about a fire chief, we talk about other people we've put on this board, and they deal with those people feet on the ground. And I, and I think that that experience across the board with some of the issues we're talking about, plus the focus we're doing, makes, makes, makes me want to follow the mayor's recommendation to keep this going. But again, I, I think all three of these candidates that we have in front of us today, they're all great options. So that's where I stand at the moment.
See, do we have any other body wishing to speak, or do we want to? I made a motion. Did I get a second?
Yes.
I did, okay.
Oh, San Antonio.
Lacking any other discussion, let's call the question, see where we go, and we can go from there.
And then before we vote, I'll just remind, whatever applicants are not appointed, all the commission meetings are open to the public. You're welcome to come in, participate in those meetings. And then we will be opening the annual recruitment, always opens in December. We will have a number of vacancies in 2026, so almost every commission is going to have at least three, four openings. Some of those will be, incumbents may reapply, others, they're going to be termed out. So next year is one of the larger years that we're going to have for the applicant pool.
Good. Thank you. With that, let's call the question.
Now, because I talked, the thing froze. Let me just one second. And the motion does carry with Deputy Mayor Lines voting no.
Okay, thank you. And now we're on to item 10B. See if we can get through 10B and 10C, or do we need a break?
I need a break. I also need to recuse myself from 10B. My wife is employed by True Care.
Okay.
So that is our, one of our primary sources of income, and I don't want to be voting on a matter that will affect the city, that affects me.
My proposal is we try and get through 10B, 10C. You'll come back for 10C.
I will come back for 10C, yes.
And then we take a break after that, right before 10D, and then goes through and get as much done on 10D before we move on to 12A and 12B. So with that, staff report on, oh, I guess you guys are already there. Been waiting, huh? Okay, so staff report, please.
Real quick, as a point of order, are we going to be listening to all open comments or just True Care on this one?
I think just True Care.
True Care. We, we don't have any speakers on this one. We have a number of speakers for 10C.
Okay.
Okay.
Make sure. We have to get Jim out of the room, though. That's the elevator going down. And there we go. Okay, let's proceed.
Okay, well, happy Wednesday. Happy to bring forward two items, the first one being the, separating them out and doing the North County Health Protection Project, I'm sorry, Project. And with the recommendation of approval of the grant for the Community Grant Program of $2,550, with councilperson recusing himself from this one. Council will have $6,040 each to add to the ones that they wish to do. The recommendation, of course, is to approve this one. Council may accept, deny, and may cause to add or change to this amount from your $6,040 each. The full, full report will come with the next group.
Any Deputy Mayor Lines?
I'd like to jump right in and move the staff's recommended, the recommended action, which would be to approve this entity, the North County Health Project, for the Community Grant.
Okay. Second, anybody?
I'm going to, I'm going to donate to them.
Okay, now, do it now.
That's what I'm saying. So I'm going to donate, I'm just going to top it off at 500. I'm going to give them 500 to their maximum ask of 3,000.
And will you second, then?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why, that's where this was.
And...
Well, I'm sorry, one, if I could, sorry to interrupt. The max for that would be $450. We, there's a limit to how much they've asked for. So for this project, they've asked for 3,000, and with the grant of 2,550, sorry, 450 would get to their max.
Yeah, I did, the only thing I see is a 2,500, so sure, 450.
Was that second?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, it was. So we got, got Deputy Mayor Lines with Councilman Schaefer seconding. Okay.
And the motion carries unanimously with Councilmember O'Hara, absent.
Perfect. Okay, and now we can bring Councilmember O'Hara back.
I'll go get him. I'll get him.
I don't know. We should never let part of our quorum leave, though. They might, they may not make it back. I know. Okay, I think, I still have a quorum, so I'll let staff, why don't you go ahead and start, because we've all read the staff report.
Hold on a second. Okay, once again, happy Wednesday. I'm honored to be, be here. For this one, I get to be with two of my team members to present this item. Nate Fisher, Management Analyst, and Julia Gilliam, Senior Management, will lead this effort. And are you guys ready? We're not going to give the full presentation, right? You were going to get right into this? Okay.
Yeah, so, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public. We have a just brief presentation to go over for the fiscal year 2026 Community Grant Program applications. So this year's applications were open from February 10th to the 27th. Application consisted of an online form providing organization information, contact information, and project information to ensure compliance with policy criteria. Applicants that discovered mistakes after submitting an application were able to resubmit a second application as long as it was received prior to the closing date. The recommendation being brought forth tonight includes 50 applications. Initial assessment identified that 17 of these 50 required corrections or additional information due to clerical errors, typos, corrupted files, that sort of thing. Staff contacted these 17 organizations to request the necessary details and allow applicants to confirm project information, and consequently, 46 applications were accepted and are presented in this report for initial allocation, while four were deemed incomplete or ineligible. In accordance with the CGP policy, grant funding for fiscal year 26 is based on the proposed budgetary allocation of $150,000. This encompasses an initial allocation of 80% of the budget, with the remaining 20% reserved for allocation by the city council during this evening's meeting. The initial allocation, as outlined in Attachment 1, is recommended for distribution to the 46 qualified applicants who have satisfied the policy criteria, and that yields an allocation of $2,550 per applicant, not to exceed the total estimated project costs. And following past precedent, city staff recommends councilmembers to divide the remaining balance, resulting in $6,040 per council member for further allocation. The city council maintains ultimate discretion and final approval authority for all grant applications. And so with that, the recommendation is for city council to review and approve the recommended funding allocations and make any desired additional allocations to the grant applicants. And with that, we'll open it up for questions.
Okay, any questions of clarification? We've got 24 public speaking requests. Yeah, so I, yeah, so.
I have a, well, were any of the ones disqualified? Do you know which ones were? Yeah, but, were they all?
Just in the red.
Oh, I thought, I thought we were under. What was the question?
No, I got it.
You're good? Okay.
I do have a question for clarification.
Go ahead.
Meals on Wheels Greater San Diego Number 49 is in the list that looks to be non-eligible. I believe we have included them in the past, but can you clarify that for me?
Yes, for that one, they are receiving funds through a different program from the city, and so not eligible to receive here.
And that was a, we had that discussion last year or the year before, right? As a policy. As a policy, we updated our grant policy.
Thank you.
And this was shared with them, and they chose to pull back from this.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other clarification questions, we'll go to public speakers. And I'm gonna limit it to two minutes, because we got, so we have a long agenda after this, and that's still gonna be almost probably an hour. So if you've heard it before, don't repeat, and let's be time efficient. So with that, let's get started.
Scott Griffiths, followed by James Austin, followed by Leah Strel.
I'm gonna get this started by going fast.
Cool.
I'm Scott Griffiths. I represent the Friends of the Encinitas Library. And I'm here to support our, here to support our request for grant money for the First Sunday Concert Series. First Sunday Concert Series has been going on for many years. The Friends put on their first concert 40 years ago at the library. And every month, we have a full house, 160 people, more or less. And we have some wonderful acts. San Diego is blessed with many wonderful musicians, and they put on extraordinary concerts right up the hill. I invite everybody to come out and see them. June, if you're only gonna see one this year, Peter Sprague, "The Sunshine of Your Love." It's a tribute to the music of cream. And if you've ever heard Peter, he puts a new spin on music you're already familiar with. Thank you.
Thank you. And if the clerk will call you out, if you can move up to the front row to help kind of speed the transition. And who's after that?
James Austin.
I'll wave my...
I speak about Leah Strel, Elizabeth Christensen, Michael Christensen, and then Wendy Christensen.
I wish I could cut to the chase, but Leah Strel, I'm the Creative Director of EcoFest Encinitas. And I want to thank you all for, in the past, really supporting us. And, you know, it's also about supporting Mother Earth and the environment and our climate. So we are the longest-running environmental fair in North County. And we're just supporting green living practices at EcoFest Encinitas on June 1st. So please, you know, come out, enjoy the eagle dance for world peace and healing at our stage. And we have a lot to offer, zero waste. And it's because of your sponsorships and the grants that we can provide this day for free. And we are exceeding our budget. And if there's any extra money available, please consider EcoFest as a best receiver. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Christensen, to be followed by Michael Christensen, Wendy Christensen, and then Mark Christensen.
I have been told to state that the, that you guys have my presentation. I don't, Striving to, IT has it?
For clarification, I waive my two minutes to her so she can have the full three minutes for her presentation.
There you go.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Christensen, and I am the president and founder of Striving to Serve Others, youth-led Encinitas nonprofit dedicated to bridging generations, empowering communities, promoting health, inclusion, and service through the arts. Our mission is simple but powerful, to promote health, inclusion, and connection by combining the creativity of art with service in a time when, when many, especially seniors and veterans, experience isolation. We create spaces where people of all ages can come together to connect, create, and feel a sense of belonging. What do we do? We provide free art social events to the Encinitas community, addressing isolation and promoting intergenerational connections. How do we do this? We bring K-12 students, seniors, and veterans together, combining creativity, compassion, and collaboration between generations. Who does this impact? Our events are adaptive, ensuring that everyone, no matter their abilities, can participate. Why do we do this? The benefits of service apply to everyone, youth, seniors, veterans, and individuals with disabilities. Our art events build confidence, reduce isolation, and strengthen social skills for all ages. Building Community Through Art and Service. Art socials are creative, collaborative, and foster lasting friendships. They create opportunities for mentoring, storytelling, and leadership that leads to a sense of unity within the community. Through art socials, we address community needs, making a direct impact on health and well-being that benefits everyone, youth, seniors, and veterans alike. Your continued support enables us to provide creative, therapeutic, and educational experiences for the Encinitas residents. Art Social Service Projects and Its Impact on Youth. First, it improves mental health. By helping others, students gain an outward focus, which boosts their self-esteem, reduces their insecurities, and promotes their emotional well-being. Next, it fosters character development, helping them gain empathy, compassion, leadership, and a sense of responsibility. Next, it allows for personal growth by improving their communication, social cooperation, and problem-solving skills. And lastly, it has an impact in the classroom. It improves students' behavior, increases their engagement in the classroom, and reduces their likelihood of engaging in risky behaviors like drug and alcohol usage. Our programs are intergenerational art socials. These are free events open to the Encinitas community and are focused on bringing K-12 students, seniors, and veterans together to make art, share stories, learn leadership, and build lasting friendships. Every event is adaptable and accessible, ensuring that everyone, no matter their ability, can fully participate. These events are deeply meaningful, fostering mentorship and leadership among youth, offer therapy, and offer therapeutic benefits for seniors and veterans. Not to mention, they help everyone involved build confidence, reduce loneliness, and strengthen their social skills. We've seen incredible storytelling emerge from something as simple as painting side by side. Veterans sharing their experiences with students, seniors mentoring young artists, and new friendships forming that extend beyond the event and into future acts of service. Striving to serve has made a lasting impact on my life, and I've seen it make a difference for so many others. What's most special to me is how service connects people who might have never crossed paths otherwise. It's inspiring to watch art and service bring people together across generations. Youth gain confidence, seniors form meaningful new connections, and veterans find purpose by sharing their stories and continuing to serve. These socials remind us that everyone has something to give, and everyone has something to learn. Thank you so much for your time and for believing in the power of community, creativity, and service.
Thank you.
Wendy?
Did we have Wendy and Mark speaking?
And then Mark, and then Jesse Hanwitt.
Got a hard act to follow there.
I am the incredibly proud mother of those two kids. If you don't recognize them from multiple Encinitas Advocate articles for, they are literally known for bringing the community together in service. They were named the first-ever champions of the month for the 38th District by Catherine Blakespear. Michael has, he's been part, they're both are part of several coalitions. They've been to Washington. They've advocated for food policies. They've advocated for so many things. I could go on and on and on. But if you ever feel discouraged about the youth of America and what we are building and creating and growing here in Encinitas, please be encouraged, because these two have been part of leading mentoring and leading other students in our community. The people that they work with, the young kids from ages K-12, include kids from OPE, Mission Estancia, you know, crossing over a little bit there, Parkdale Lane, SDA, La Costa Canyon High School, of course, Oak Crest, DeGanio Middle School. They've just had such a wide impact. And the veterans and the active-duty military and the projects they've done have been so impactful. Our local senior centers, they've actually already done three events this year. And every single dollar stays right here in Encinitas. It impacts our residents right here. And word is spreading, we're getting bigger, and so we're hoping to get more dollars for that. And I also wanted to give a really quick shout-out to the La Costa Canyon High School Marching Band. It is a community band. It actually encompasses a welcoming environment that includes students from DeGanio, Oak Crest Middle School, SDA. It's a huge community band. It's the only one in our entire school district. So all 10 schools can encompass any kids that want to learn how to play an instrument that have never even picked up one before. So anyway, I just want to thank you all. I thank you so much to the Arts Commission that has just been incredible. They have really just seen the vision of what our youth are trying to do. And I just thank you all for really believing in our youth and seeing the future and investing in them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Following Mark will be Jesse Hanwitt.
Jesse Marks up next.
Mark, to be followed by Jesse Hanwitt, David Mott, and then Christine Schindler.
So I just want to say, sitting through this, and it's been long, council meeting tonight, I'm amazed at how much you guys have on your plate. And I just want to say thank you for your service. I appreciate it. As far as the striving for serve, I just want to say that I've been to several of these events, and I've seen the impact, both on the seniors and the youth. The seniors, it brings a light into their eyes and lets them know, excuse me, that they're not forgotten. And they do have things to share. But more for the youth, when I see them associate with the seniors, which normally they wouldn't do, because they tend to stay in their own little groups, and how easily, under these circumstances and these situations that are provided, that they can bond to these senior citizens and have so much in common. And they both leave gaining something. And through the different ones that I've attended, I have never seen one of the youth go away and feel like it was a waste of their time. And so many of the youth have so many things pulling in their directions. This is one thing to help them to learn service and extending compassion to other people. Youth do need a little bit of support, and that's why we're asking for support from the City Council. They need a little bit of boost to get out from behind their social media accounts and things to do. But there's so much benefit that comes from this. Also, with the marching band, it provides students that have musical talent or that are building musical talent, a community to be a part of and to build confidence. And it, it does, it's a great thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jesse Hanwitt, and I'm on the Encinitas Senior Citizens Commission, but I'm also the president of Village Encinitas. And I want to thank you for your support through the Community Grant Program of Village Encinitas. You know, without the Community Grant, for a lot of the really small nonprofits, there'd be a lot of things that we wouldn't be able to do. So we really do appreciate it. And just as a little background on Village Encinitas, we are relatively new, and our goal is to create a caring community that helps seniors to age in place. And we do that, we're all volunteers. We do that by volunteering to help each other with the small, everyday things that if they were to be building up and not addressed, it would make it difficult for people to stay in their own homes. And that's really simple things, like a ride to the doctor or the grocery store, trimming a bush that now you have to climb a ladder to reach, taking a trash can out when somebody has had surgery. And even more important, friendly visits. People are feeling, as they get older, especially if they're living alone, they feel loneliness and social isolation. And it's nice just to know that somebody can come over and have a cup of coffee with you. So our goal for the city grant is to spread the word about Village Encinitas. We have about 65 members now. We've been in operation since last July. And we really want people to understand, they have to know about it, to understand what the benefits are. And we know that technology is not a good way to reach the older adult population. It just, it doesn't work. So what we want to do is we want to get out into the community, and we want to be involved in the city fairs and the expos and have a table at the farmer's market. And so our budget of 3,000 included purchasing such things as a canopy and tables and a lot of printed material in order to be able to get out there. So we're just hoping that maybe if somebody could allocate the $500, $500 to top off our budget.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is David Mott. I'm here representing the La Costa Canyon High School Music Program. Already been touched on nicely by the Christensen family. So I'm, I've been a three-year parent volunteer, and I've been the treasurer these three years. So I'm gonna just talk real quick about just the financials of it. So we've grown, we've got a fantastic music director who's grown the program, average of like 32% over the last three years. Of course, that growth brings needs. It's about $1,200 to $1,300 per student to be able to fund the program, the basic operating costs. And so we do that through parent donations, various fundraising activities. But these community grants, which you guys have been generous to allocate to us the last two years, are extremely helpful to us in growing the program. And we really appreciate that. It really helps us strengthen the program. And as they mentioned, even though we have a Carlsbad address for the school itself, we've got DeGanio, SDA, several other Encinitas schools, and then half the LCC population is also Encinitas residents. Thank you.
Next is Christine Schindler, followed by Jennifer Grodeberg, Jack Harris, and then Halil Katsof, Katsof?
All right, Christine Schindler. So first off, just thank you very much. So thank you to staff, thank you to council for having a program like this. I think it's really important. So it's hard to make your decisions, I'm sure. It's gonna be interesting to see where you focus. It's kind of one of those, who do you love more? Your mother, your father, your daughter, your son? I mean, there's so many great programs. There are five that kind of float up to the top for me. So Village Encinitas, Jesse, that's in my neighborhood. We're starting it there and expanding out. EcoFest, I'm involved with that. Free Bike Valet, by the way. Healthy Day Partners, MEM. Oh my God, can't say enough about her. I mean, it's just amazing. Art in the Park, the Veteran Art Program. I've been taking advantage of their programming. They have it every Saturday, Sunday. It's amazing. They're doing amazing work. And they deserve a lot of support to continue that process forward. Striving to Serve, I did not know about you. I am an intergenerational junkie. I love young people, safe routes. I love old people, fall prevention. When you put old and young together, I mean, it is, it is truly amazing. So you have hard decisions to make. You have money to spend, and that's a lovely thing. So I just thank you for your efforts.
My name is Jenny Grodeberg, and I'm a member of the Grants Committee for the Assistance League of Rancho San Diego. Accompanying me this evening is our chapter president, Linda Kermat. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about our program, Operation School Bell, a truly impactful program serving one of our community's most precious and valuable resources, our children. Imagine a child embarrassed by their clothes and shoes at school. Poor self-esteem can have a negative impact on academic success and attendance. New clothes and shoes go a long way towards boosting a child's self-confidence. Studies show that appropriate school clothing can improve school attendance and help classroom performance. Operation School Bell strives to help children thrive and succeed in school by providing new school clothing. Operation School Bell is the Assistance League's signature program to help improve the lives of impoverished children and families. Our organization has been supporting this community since 1997. In September of last year, we were able to host 450 Encinitas children at a shopping event at the Target store in the Encinitas. Each child was allowed to spend up to $100 tax-free on school clothes and shoes. The children shopped with their parents, The children shopped with their parents, and Assistance League volunteers participated by helping at the registration table, in the boys' and girls' departments, and at the checkout stands to ensure all of the money was spent appropriately. For our shopping event in 2024, a total of $45,000 went to helping Encinitas children. On behalf of the Assistance League, I want to thank you for your continued support of Operation School Bell, and in particular, for this year's grant of $2,550. I am here this evening to request your consideration for providing us with an additional $2,000 so that we can support 20 more students. Your grant will make a difference to the lives of Encinitas children in need. And I'd like to share with you a testimonial from the mother of students who participated in a past program. Thank you Assistance League of Rancho San Diego and to all who donated funds for our children's new clothes. After nine months...
Just finish up if you can. Just one or two more sentences.
Okay. They said, "They were in need of essential clothing for the children after nine months of unemployment, and then they would not have been able to fill the needs without our support. I've often donated to such causes, and now I have experienced being recipient. We cannot always control our circumstances, but we can open our hearts to the needs around us." Thank you for reaching out.
Jack Harris?
Hi, my name is Jack Harris, and I am a junior at La Costa Canyon High School. And I'm also currently the brass captain in the SDU HSD Maverick Brigade Marching Band. And I joined this band when I was a freshman, and I had no experience whatsoever in my instrument, trumpet. But not only did I learn how to work hard by being thrown into band camp that very first summer, but I also learned, more importantly, how to belong. And I gained a place where I could belong, and that has been life-changing for me, especially in my high school experience. And our marching band, we are open to students all around the district, and it's become a place where a lot of people can belong, especially people who maybe don't belong other places, and it's extremely valuable to a lot of people, myself included. And I've been able to meet so many people from other schools like SDA, De Geaño, or Oak Crest, and create a lot of important lasting friendships. And I would say that this marching band is a valuable part of our community because we participate in community events such as the Encinitas Holiday Parade, in which we're the only competitive marching band participating. And we're growing rapidly. And every year, we've jumped up a size division in the competitive circuit for marching band. And as we're growing, our needs are also growing. And we're having plenty of people join who have never even known this district had a marching band, and they're eager to find out what it's like and to play an instrument. So this is why we are asking for a grant from the city of Encinitas to help us maintain our growing program and gain legitimacy and support the community for our performances. Thank you.
Hillel Katsof, followed by Kathleen Lees, Nancy Logan, and then Miki Vukovich?
Honorable Mayor Elez, Deputy Mayor Lines, council members Ohara, Schaefer, and San Antonio. My name's Hillel Katsof, and I'm a board member of the Encinitas Friends of the Arts. It's a community-based nonprofit organization. We're very grateful for the proposed allocation of $2,550 to the Encinitas Friends of the Arts as part of the community grant program. This year, we will be celebrating the 12th Annual Encinitas Dia de los Muertos on October 25th at the Miracosta College San Alejo Campus. While we are grateful for this allocation, we wish to respectfully request increased funding to support our 12th Annual Encinitas Dia de los Muertos celebration in our community. This free cultural event is an important tradition for many of our Latino neighbors, offering a meaningful opportunity to honor loved ones and share rich heritage through music, art, and food, and community storytelling. With additional funding, we can ensure the event is vibrant and accessible to all, fostering strong community connections and cultural appreciation. The celebration not only honors tradition, but also builds unity in our community. Budgeted expenses for this event is $34,000, an anticipated number of attended between 2,500 and 3,000. Thank you very much for considering this request and for continuing support for this wonderful cultural celebration each year. I'd also like to add that I'm very excited and I'm honored that Encinitas Friends of the Arts has a new program. It's called, and there it is, Cardiff by the Sea Music and Arts Salon. The inaugural event will be held on July 13th. You can scan the QR code for more information. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council. My name's Kathleen Lees, and I'm also on the board with the Encinitas Friends of the Arts. I immediately left the, I termed out on the Arts Commission, actually, and went to help with the Arts, because once you get involved, you want to stay involved. I'm here to invite you to save the date, Saturday, October 25th, for this year's Dia de los Muertos celebration. This will be the 12th year the city of Encinitas has been a major supporter of Dia de los Muertos, and I am here to ask you once again to support this beautiful, free, because of your helpful, because of your support, fun, everyone is welcome event to the maximum amount you are able to share. Despite its name, the Day of the Dead celebration is not the least bit scary or morbid. It's a fun family time of celebration and coming together with a variety of Mexican music and dancing by our own ballet forklarico dancers in those fabulous costumes with both traditional and mariachi musicians. The last few years, this event had been held at the San Alejo campus of Miracosta College, and this year it will be held in conjunction with the Cardiff Main Street Association Farmer's Market. The farmer's market visitors can join the Day of the Dead celebration, and the Dia de los Muertos visitors can take part in the booths and the food services at the market. Fortunately, this is, you know, rare in any community, there's plenty of parking at the junior college. As always, a community ofrenda of both family and celebrities will available for people to enjoy and add photos. Always a special perk is the unique group of classic cars with ofrendas displayed in the trunks, and children can get their faces painted, and there will be several booths where everyone can paint sugar skulls and make flowers and do other crafts. Gabby B. Love, a community outreach survivor, and Los Angelitos de Encinitas are working on producing this project this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Nancy Logan, San Diego Alliance for Drug for Youth, and a 38-year resident of Encinitas, Alivenhain District. I want to, as always, thank you for your continued support of the Steady Buddy program. In the interest of time, I'll let you read the project description, but you need to know what a difference this program makes for kids. High school kids come to the elementary schools for an hour a week and tutor these at-risk students. They're a role model for them, they're a listening ear. It's an amazing program. It's still going on, and I can tell you, the longevity of the Steady Buddy program, we've been 30 years, it's a testament to your financial support, that we appreciate so much and use so much. So any and all dollars you can grant us would be very much appreciated, and it's so wisely used. So thank you again for your years of continued support.
Following Miki is Amelia Brodka, Karina Ellens, Jessica Robledo.
Good evening. My name is Miki Vukovich. I'm a lifelong skateboarder, and I'm here to speak in support of the Exposure Skate Event at the Encinitas Community Skate Park. As a teenager, I attended San Diego High School, and from my mother and my apartment in Cardiff, I used to skate up along McKinnon, along the, past the property, then known as the Hall Property, that now houses the wonderful skate park. Every year, today, the Encinitas Skate Park hosts the Exposure Skate Event, which, in all my 40 years in working in skateboarding, including in 2021, helping to send our first skateboarding Olympic team to the Olympics in Tokyo, which included two young ladies from Encinitas, I have not seen a more positive event that has done more for skateboarding and for growing the diversity and bringing more women and girls and previously marginalized groups into the sport than anything, including world championships in Europe, Olympic events, et cetera. It's such a positive event, it literally brings the whole world of skateboarding's eyeballs on Encinitas every year, and not just the 130 or so competitors who come from all around the globe, but all their friends and family and fans who tune into what they're up to on that weekend right here. It's literally the most positive event in all of skateboarding every year, and it's that beacon that shines all around the world is emanating right here from Encinitas. So anything you can do to continue to support and to increase support for that event and ensure that it continues to thrive here in our community would be greatly appreciated and, I think, benefit everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, council. Thank you so much for your time. I know this has been quite the meeting. My name is Amelia Brodka. I'm a local Olympian and co-founder of Exposure. We'll be celebrating our 14th year as the world's largest and longest-running women's skateboarding event right here in Encinitas. Each year, we bring thousands of spectators for the weekend, but for the week of the event, we have at least 300 athletes, family members, volunteers, and staff that live in Encinitas for the week leading up to the event. These international visitors alone bring nearly $500,000 in revenue, including lodging, meals, shopping, and transportation. And we're really grateful to have been the recipients of this grant for many years and to be able to have our event in this beautiful city. But it costs us over $20,000 just to meet the special event permit requirements, and that's before we've even hired staff or rented equipment. We meet every public safety and logistical standard the city requires, and we do it gladly because we care deeply about this community. But we're effectively subsidizing a half-million-dollar economic engine with almost no city support. And this event is free for all. It's more than a contest. It's an internationally respected platform for inclusion, empowerment, and community. We are one of the few events in the world that prioritizes girls and women in action sports. And we've also helped to raise over $200,000 for survivors of domestic violence. We're helping to build a generation of strong, confident girls, and we're doing it in your skate park, in your city. And even a modest increase in the grant would have a tangible effect on our capacity to sustain and grow this event. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karina. I'm originally from Brazil, and I represent the South American skaters. And thank you so much for this opportunity because these ladies make a miracle at the community skateboard. Normally, because for us, for South America, bring the kids to this event so much money. The families save money around 10 months to bring to Encinitas. And we bring the city to Encinitas for all of the South Americans. Please listen us because sports, it's very important for kids. I am a PE teacher, and by the way, I apply for a B teacher here, because I love teach kids, and I believe key sports, skateboards, and many other sports save lives. Thank you so much.
Following Jessica will be Gabby Love, Deanne Seaback, Karen Gersh, and then Erin Stone.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jessica Robledo, and I am the program's director and events coordinator at Exposure Skate. I want to thank you for the years of grant funding for Exposure Skate's programs, but today I'm here to ask for added support for an event that has not only put Encinitas on the global map for women's skateboarding, but has also deeply impacted the lives of our community. Exposure Skate is more than a skateboarding event, it's a celebration of empowerment, inclusion, and community connection. Since 2012, we've brought thousands of people to Encinitas Community Park, with 65% of women's Olympic skateboarders having competed at our event. We've donated over $86,000 to the CRC's local domestic violence survivor programs and helped raise over $200,000 through keynote events. We've also estimated over $500,000 in revenue from out-of-town participants, families, and supporters that stay here in Encinitas during this event. The ripple effects are real. Last year alone, we spent over $75,000 with local vendors just to meet permit and city requirements, supporting small businesses right here in Encinitas. But costs continue to rise. Our permit fees jumped over 33% from 2025 to 26, and our overall expenses have climbed sharply with increased security needs. At our last event, unfortunately, we had to respond to serious safety incidents involving unhoused individuals at the Encinitas Community Park, including one arrest for domestic violence. Our team acted swiftly to keep families and participants safe, but these challenges show just how much is required behind the scenes to make this a safe park and a successful event for all. We're not just asking for funding, we're asking you to recognize Exposure as a key part of what makes Encinitas vibrant, connected, and forward-thinking. With your support of additional funding, we can keep creating safe spaces, building community, and showcasing this city as a leader in equity and opportunity. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Hello, city council, mayor. My name is Gabby B. Love, outreach coordinator for Miracosta College, also participant with board member for Mexican-American Guidance Association, MEGA, who's a scholarship program for our Latinx and first-generation students for the San Diego District, also part of Los Angelitos de Encinitas, which supports our students to get access to after-school programs and activities, and then also part of the Nature Collective, making sure that we, our students and communities, access, and especially our Latinx communities, access nature. And then finally, also part of the Encinitas Friends of the Arts and working for Miracosta College. My parents, well, my grandparents arrived here during the RACER program, and I will tell you that, you know, that's the 1940s or so, but having gone through the District of San Diego, I really didn't know who I was. I didn't understand the value of Latinos and Latinx culture in Encinitas or the north coastal area. And now that I've grown and have gone to higher education, the fact that I didn't really see celebration of my culture was really hurtful, and it's become really important for me to make sure that my students and generations that come after me learn about their culture. And part of that is the Dia de los Muertos event, that is a free event that brings a lot of opportunities for my students. When, you know, growing up, didn't have the opportunity to volunteer much, but what I do, I collaborate a lot with the city of Encinitas. Any opportunities I have to be able to expose our students to different career opportunities and learn about the culture is huge. So if you can find in your funding, additional funding for our program, greatly appreciate it, because we're all looking for opportunities to collaborate and allow our students to be able to not have to experience what I did of not knowing who I was until I got into college. And unfortunately, we all don't have that privilege to go to college. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Karen Gersh. I'm the president of the Encinitas Community Garden. I have our CFO here, Agnes Moffett, and we are on Farm Lab property. We lease our space from the school district there. We've been, we have 108 raised garden beds, and we've been serving Encinitas residents for 10 years now. Agnes and I have both been there since the very beginning. We helped build the beds there, and we've fostered a strong community of people, you know, without space to grow their food at home. They meet and learn from each other. We share tools, we share information, we build community. We build community. And we won the Environmental Award from the city last year. So, we submitted a timely grant application for, to build an education pavilion in the garden, and that's what we're asking for the grant for. This will help us to, will have space to hold events and hands-on learning workshops, et cetera. The grant would cover materials, labor, and related permits. Unfortunately, our grant was disqualified due to lack of a business registration. This defect has been corrected, and we have our license here. Anyway, thank you, and I hope you will consider our request.
Next speaker is Deanne Seback, followed by Erin Stone, and then Kelly Peters.
Good evening, Council. I'm Deanne Seback, a local resident artist. I was an art commissioner for six years, founding member of Encinitas Friends of the Arts, and I really appreciate your support of Encinitas Friends of the Arts over the years, and particularly with Dia de los Muertos. It really is such a fantastic event, and I don't need to talk much about it because they've already said everything. I just want to reiterate that and how important it is for this community because our community is so rich with our Hispanic neighbors. And it really not only supports them and their culture, but it really supports a lot of unity between the different cultures here. And I know I have learned so much about the Hispanic culture through, you know, through volunteering there. So, I just want to encourage your support. We obviously have a very, it's a very expensive event, so that's why we're asking for whatever additional funding you can find. Just one more thing with the health and public safety, is that the one? I've got the solution. You just need to add a few more people to that. Honestly, why not? Break the rules? I don't know. Are they rules? Or just do it. Think out of the box because those people, I mean, to pass up that, Chris, would be crazy. So, that's what I say.
Hi, my name is Erin Stone. I manage the Education Department at Solana Center for Environmental Innovation. We were very fortunate last year to receive funding through this grant program for our textile, tackling textile event, which looks into creative and sustainable and accessible ways to prevent textile waste. Through the rethink, reuse, repair, repurpose, and recycle model, it brought together a variety of clothing swap and crafting activities, local artisans, and experts who could bring their creative problem-solving regarding textiles to life, and was free, open to all Encinitas residents to attend and learn. And with the support of this grant, we were able to rescue 711 pounds of textiles from the landfill. Only eight pounds went into the landfill. Everything else was rescued through donation and recycling. So that was really exciting, and we hope that with this new support this year around, we'll be able to make that even a bigger mark in the community. Thank you.
Am I the last one?
I wish I could say you're saving the best for last, but everyone here has been so amazing. So, thank you guys for keeping me up past my bedtime. I'm sure you're feeling the same. My name is Kelly Peters. I'm the Vice President at Rancho Coastal Humane Society, born and raised here in Encinitas, went to Oceanol, Oak Crest, San Diego. I would have gone to college here, but you don't have a college here, so I went to CSD. But I've been with Rancho Coastal Humane Society for 14 years. I just need to express how Rancho Coastal is so much more than just a pet adoption facility. I think that's kind of what we're known for, but there, we go so far beyond adopting out pets. What we really care about is making sure that we're there to show the bond between humans and their pets and the needs to keep them together. So, as much as we want to be adoption agency, we really want to put ourselves out of business, right? So, we're all about trying to figure out ways people don't need to relinquish their pets. So, we opened a community pet food bank when we were finding that relinquishment was a lot due to the fact that people couldn't afford pet food. We opened a vet care for seniors program. So, seniors who are on a fixed income, if they have a pet and they are in need of our assistance, they fill out an application, and then we try to see how we can help them. Last year alone, we spent over $700,000 giving money back into this community so that we can keep pets with their owners. It's a mutually beneficial thing. So, last year, we held a grand opening festival to kind of highlight our new buildings and our programs. The community came back in full force, asking us to do it year after year. And as you guys know, it's not an easy task to put on an event every single year, so we do need some help. We're hoping to put on this community festival. We're going to have a disaster preparedness section because I think we're forgetting about our furry friends during all these LA wildfires. We need to be there to support them. So, yeah, we really just could use any support. We're so grateful for everything you guys are doing in our community, and thank you for listening to all of us tonight, and thank you for your consideration.
That concludes speakers.
Wow. Wow, yeah, a lot of good speakers. I say, you still good without a break? And let's get done with this one and then a break. Okay. So, with that, how do you want to proceed? I'll look to Dave. You want to get our input for our discretionary, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you've got the spreadsheet up? Anybody want to go first? Looking for volunteers?
Do you want to just fill in what we have?
Yeah, yeah. If you know how you want to allocate it, and if you don't have any further questions, let's just get to it, and, you know, if we can get through it quickly, we can get through it quickly.
I'm good to go if anybody else wants to go. I think I have a little bit of money left over, but I'm going to go after the fact, but I can knock most of mine out right now. Start off real quickly with Exposure Skate. I do not have any additional money allocated to you, but I do want to talk to you about making your event partner better with the city. I own an events company, and this is what I do. And so, let's make an appointment, come into my office, and let's figure this out so we can make this. Skateboarding is something we want to work on in the city across the board. We're working with a group that wants to put in a bowl in the city, and I look at us as the skateboarding capital of the world, and the return on investment we get on events like this, the bowl itself and all things going down there. I want to work with you in that regard. I could give you $500 tonight and not give somebody else $500, but I want to help you in ways that will give you more than $500.
Okay.
All right. Moving to the spreadsheet. Start off with Assistance League of San Diego, very much like what I do every year with Casa de Amistad, and the difference it makes with kids who need this experience is huge, so Moving to number 10, Doors of Change. I currently have allocated $250. Item 11, Encinitas Education Foundation. Make sure I'm saying the right names with the right names. I have $500 allocated. For the Encinitas Historical Society, I've allocated $1,000. For 17, the Friends, 17 is Friends of Encinitas Library, is that correct? Friends of Encinitas Library, I have allocated $500. For 18, Happy Kids Movement, I've allocated $450. For I Love a Clean San Diego, I've allocated $500. For, I'm going to hold off on that one. For San Diego, item 38. San Diego for Drug Free Youth, I've allocated $500. For Wingtip, or, sorry, for Striving, number 43, I've allocated as of this time $300. I may see what adding on to that. I want to thank you for coming out because I did not know what, a lot of information about what you're doing out there, and I, that was where your $300 came from. Item 44, Village Encinitas. I'd like to, I'd like to top them off at that $450. I think next time you should ask for more money. For 45, Via Lobos, I'd like to allocate $500. And for the Wingtip, I'd like to top them off at $450. And I believe that leaves me with like a couple hundred dollars or something like that, but I'm going to wait till we get there.
I'll go next.
Okay, go ahead.
Assistance League, I'll give you $1,000. Boys and Girls Club, number three, $500. Coastal Roots, number eight, $250. Oliven High and Town Council, nine, $500. Number 14, Encinitas Historical Society, $500. Exposure Skate, $250. Happy Kids Movement, $250. Healthy Day Partners, oh, does that go over?
Yeah, I think I already covered that.
Okay. Oh, you covered it?
Yep.
All right. Let's take that one back then. Healthy Day Partners, $500. I Love a Clean San Diego, $500. Oh, Healthy Days, over as well.
If you pull that back $50, you'd be there.
All right. Let's, that's $450. San Diego Art Institute, $500. San Diego for Drug Free Youth, let's skip that one for right now. St. Andrews, $500. And then, I don't know how much I have left.
I lost this first combo.
You have spent $4,950.
Let's do $400 for San Diego for Drug Free Youth. And then, let's just hold off for right now.
Let's see, Luke?
Yeah, I can go.
Or Joyce? Either one.
All right. We got Assistance League, $250. I'll do the California Congress of Parents, Teachers, and Students, is going to be $500. Do Campaña Studios, $1,000. Coastal Roots, $500. Encinitas Friends of the Arts is $500. The Exposure Skate, I'm going to do $500. I did have a question. Is there, is there, well, is there a way for us to help out with permits to help the overhead by minimizing the, or help by, help them out by minimizing the overhead versus...
Probably not tonight.
Yeah, I know. I'm just asking, since we're here, and that's what, that was brought up.
Sure. Councilmember Shaver, so what we would have to do is they would have to make a request. You could either waive fees if the request came in. We've done that for organizations, or there would have to be a partnership established by an MOU.
Copy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Friends of Encinitas Library, $250. Happy Kids Movement, $250. Sorry, I got to keep all this organized.
Already funded.
It's already funded?
Yep.
The Happy Kids?
Yes.
All right. I'm just, I got to, you guys stole all my thunder. All right. Here, La Costa Canyon High School Foundation for the Band, $500. Lucchetti Arts and Culture Foundation, $250. The Mission Edge San Diego, $500. Rancho Coastal, $500. Got all of my animals from there, except for my most recent, but I love you guys. San Diego Drug Free Youth, $250. And then, Striving to Serve Others, thank you for that presentation, phenomenal, $500. Where do I end up?
A little over.
By how much?
$6,450. That is 410. 410 over.
410 over? Okay, I'll reassess.
I'll give him $1,040. Mine, that'll be my contribution to the, so you want to take $1,040 off, that'll be my contribution to Rancho Coastal.
So, you're giving...
I'll give 140, you give 360.
Got it.
And that takes that 140 off yours and brings it closer to where you need to be.
Got it. I'll take the $250 out of the Campaña, so take the, whatever it is that I have to take off. I gave him $1,000, just subtract it off the Campaña. That work? Campaña was number five.
You got 160 to go.
And then, what was that about Rancho Coastal?
He was, I was going to leave it at...
I had 140 left over, so I gave my 140 to Rancho Coastal. We made his 500 into 360, so they still get the 500, but it allows him to come up to 60, 40, or close to it. So, you got to find $20.
Here, I got it in my pocket right here.
Yeah, really.
Again, I just subtracted from the thousand to Campaña Studios.
Did we get there?
Yeah.
Cool. Should be. Next.
All right. I'll jump in. I'm just so thrilled we're able to fund all 46 of these wonderful groups. Thank you for submitting your applications. I'll start with number one, Assistance League School Bell. I have $750. Number five, Campaña Studios, $500. Number six, Cardiff Educational Foundation, $1,000. Number 12, EcoFest, $250. Number 13, Dia de los Muertos, $1,000. Number 14, Encinitas Historical Society, $1,000. Number 15, Experience Nature Unplugged, $500. Number 27, Nature Collective, $500. And I think that leaves me with 500 left. Am I right?
540. 540.
Oh.
We get $6,040.
Okay.
I did the same thing.
Okay, good. I didn't realize. So, number 43, Striving to Serve Others, $290. And number 44, Village Encinitas, $250.
Village Encinitas is at the Axe.
I see.
So, you have $250 left.
We all set?
So, I've got 250 left. I'll go and assist Exposure Skate.
All set?
That's it.
Okay. And, you know, we're not funding this. You all are funding this, by the way. Just so we're clear, this is taxpayer money, and I never, ever forget that, and I know this group doesn't forget that. So, let me start with number nine, Oliven High and Town Council for $500, and then go to number 13, Friends, Encinitas Friends of the Arts for Dia de los Muertos. Love it. And if you haven't been there, go. The performances are phenomenal. Let's see, 14, Encinitas Historical Society, $500. Let's see, I'm trying to do this in somewhat order so you go down the list. Friends of Encinitas Library, the first Sunday concerts, $500. Number 19, Healthy Day Partners for the CRC Pantry, $500. Let me just try. Are they over?
Yeah, they're already...
Oh, boy. Okay, we'll come back to that one. Let me try and figure out what the... Let me try and figure out what the next, 20. I Love a Clean San Diego, 500. And I'm moving on, 25, the Mano en Mano Foundation, 500. 27, the Nature Collective, Wings Over Wetlands, 250. The, 28, North Coast Repertory Theater, Shakespeare in the Schools, 250. Actually, did I, I make that 500, 'cause I had extra. And next one is 29, North Shore Symphony, 500.
Gotta pull back 50 on that one.
Oh.
450.
450, on North Coast, north, sorry, North Shore Symphony. This is the trouble with going last, and if I'd gone first, I wouldn't have this problem. So that was 29, I'm moving on to 32. 500 for Plastic Beach.
That's a good one.
34, Rancho Coastal, 250. And where am I? 38, San Diegoito for Drug Free Youth, Study Buddy Program, 400, or 540, so you got that extra 40 in there. And I think 41, the St. Andrews Episcopal Church Food Pantry, 500. And am I there now? Who did I miss?
You're 50 off.
Oh, that was that 450. Do it for Rancho Coastal, we'll do 300 for Rancho Coastal. And I got at least one of mine from Rancho Coastal. If not two, I'm not sure.
All right, I'll get my balance, so 500, La Costa Canyon, the marching band. And then the balance to Encinitas Community Gardens. I think they, didn't they... Did they get their...
Director Knopf. We have a council member that wants to donate to one of the foundations that did not meet the requirement, but they said they have it at this time.
And we can follow through to make sure that's, I mean, all good.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are we, it looks like we're there, right? Everybody agrees with what's in there?
I'm motion to...
Motion to accept.
I'll second it. And call a question?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for all that you do for our community.
And so we're gonna, we're gonna take a quick break, I'm gonna remind people of an old Mark Twain quote about, "People who love sausage and respect the law should never watch either of being made." And I think, you know, so if it looks a little rough, it's because it's all happening here in front of you. But, so we'll, we'll take a 10-minute break, be back, and we'll get on to 10D. Power, power, power.
Hello. There we go. Now I think people heard. Okay, if we can come back to order. At a little later than we'd planned, nine thirty-nine. Now we're on to item ten D, the Homing Homeless Action Plan Update. And we will start with a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council members. My name is Patty Anders, Policy and Housing Planning Manager for the Development Services Department. And I am here this evening to provide an update on the Homeless Action Plan. So in February of 2021, City Council adopted the city's Homeless Action Plan, or HAP. The HAP was developed to improve the quality of life for residents by preventing and reducing homelessness within the city and services as the city's guiding and serves as a city's guiding document for addressing homelessness. The HAP provides an action-oriented strategy that includes steps to address systematic gaps identified through data analysis and stakeholder engagement. The steps outlined in the HAP reflect national best practices that have been shown in a number of cities to be cost-effective approaches to assist in addressing homelessness. The three primary goals established in the HAP are shown on the screen. The first goal is increasing the capacity of the city and the community to end homelessness in the city through the development of a collaborative, community-driven approach. The second goal is to decrease the number of individuals experiencing homelessness through a demand-driven, person-based homeless response in support of housing service system. And lastly, to increase the availability of temporary and permanent housing. So over the past year, city staff has partnered with the County of San Diego Department of Housing and Community Development Services and the Office of Homeless Solutions Division, Jewish Family Services, People Assisting the Homeless, or PATH. And we opened the Buena Creek Navigation Center in collaboration with the City of Vista, which I will discuss in more detail later on in the presentation. And we continue to utilize the My Encinitas app as a tool for residents to report homeless activities. These community partnerships increase capacity of the city's homeless response system with the goal of decreasing the number of individuals experiencing homelessness within the city. So homelessness is a growing issue at the national, state, regional, and local levels. That growth can be seen here in the point-in-time count data, which shows increases in both the unsheltered and total unhoused population from 2023 to 2024. In this table, we're looking at the number of unsheltered homeless individuals as well as total unhoused individuals, which includes both unsheltered individuals and homeless sheltered individuals staying in emergency shelters or other temporary housing programs. So the city's annual point-in-time count data over the last decade is depicted in this slide with the notable exception of 2021, when the point-in-time count was not conducted in San Diego County due to COVID. As we saw on the prior slide, there was an increase in homelessness in both the City of Encinitas and the greater San Diego region from 2023 to 2024. So San Diego County Department of Housing and Community Development Services, Division of Office, Divisions of their Office of Homeless Solutions Division focuses on collaborative and coordinated outreach and case management services via a multidisciplinary partnership to assist people experiencing or at risk of homelessness. The county performs outreach in the city at least once a day per week, connecting individuals to self-sufficiency programs such as CalFresh, CalWorks, Medi-Cal, and General Relief. And they also provide case management and housing navigation services. So People Assisting the Homeless, or PATH, is a county, San Diego county-wide homeless outreach program designated, designed to support cities in the county to help them address homelessness by assisting people who are experiencing homelessness and struggling with mental health and substance abuse issues. PATH has conducted outreach in the city at least two days a week. That's their current schedule. We have them about two days a week to support our unsheltered individuals with meeting basic needs and providing housing-focused, short-term case management. In calendar year 2024, PATH served 100 unduplicated clients and placed 15 individuals in permanent housing. The Jewish Family Services Safe Parking Program started in February of 2020 and provides 25 parking spaces at the Encinita Senior and Community Center. The program provides resources, tools, and support to help individuals and families stabilize and transition back into permanent housing. Services are focused on basic needs, assistance, employment, family wellness, school success, financial education, credit repair, and housing. During 2024 calendar year, JFS served 36 unhoused individuals with 16 positive exits, where individuals were placed into a housing solution. And of the 25 spaces, there was an average stay of 119 days per vehicle and a 76% average nightly occupancy, which equates to 19 vehicles. So since the program started in February 2020, a total of 224 unhoused individuals have been served. So city staff also collaborates with the county, PATH, and other community partners as part of the Homeless Outreach Program for Empowerment, or HOPE Team. Part of the HOPE Team also includes the Sheriff's Community Oriented Policing and Problem Solving, or COPs, units, which was expanded in July of 2024 by adding two additional deputies to the team to provide weekend coverage. The HOPE Team provides referrals to the Buena Creek Navigation Center and connects unhoused residents to other resources as desired and available. So for 2024 calendar year, the HOPE Team responded to enclosed 379 requests for encampments, overnight camping in vehicles, and persons experiencing homelessness. Staff would like to point out that these requests represent the number of public submitted through the My Encinitas app, and they do not reflect the number of individuals experiencing homelessness within the city. In addition, the encampment data was refined at the end of 2022 to collect more details on the location of encampments. It's important to note that any request from the public regarding someone sleeping or utilizing a tent in any public space during operating hours does not necessarily constitute a violation of the municipal code. However, overnight camping in city's parks and other public spaces where camping is prohibited would constitute a violation that the sheriff's deputy can enforce. So in March 2024, the city, in partnership with the City of Vista, opened the Buena Creek Navigation Center, or BCNC. It's a low-barrier navigation center located in the unincorporated area of the City of Vista. It provides interim housing and trauma-informed support to adults experiencing homelessness who are pursuing long-term rehabilitation and stable housing. BCNC consists of 24 rooms with a capacity to serve up to 48 people. Encinitas has exclusive use of six rooms with a total of 12 beds. The BCNC service providers, Retread, and Retread staff works with clients to prepare an individual care plan, including wraparound services. For calendar year 2024, a total of 56 unduplicated residents were served at the BCNC. A total of 44 program exits took place, with 13 individuals were placed into permanent housing, five were placed into temporary housing, and seven were placed in an institutional situation. There were 17 negative exits, meaning their individuals' return to homelessness, which is defined as a place not meant for human habitation. And two were unable to be interviewed prior to their exiting. So the average length of stay was 49 days, and the year-to-date occupancy rate is 83% or 10 beds. A few challenges with keeping BCNC at capacity do include our service providers having limited transportation ability to transport unhoused individuals to BCNC. And in addition to some of the individuals placed there, they weren't ready to be housed. So as of August 2024, staff began participating in the Regional Homeless Management Information System, or HMIS, managed by the Regional Task Force on Homelessness, or RTFH. HMIS is a U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD mandated software application used to collect, store, and manage data about individuals and families who use homeless assistance services in a defined area. The data collected in HMIS will help staff track resources offered, understand the needs of the people they serve, promote effectiveness and efficiency, and really importantly, it reduces duplication of efforts. So because HMIS participation is a statutory requirement for recipients of most federal and state homeless funding services, participation in HMIS will allow the city to access additional grant opportunities to increase the city's funding to help address homelessness. So having access to HMIS also allows the city to develop a by-name list, that is, a data-informed systematic approach to coordinate services offered to unhoused individuals. It strategically operationalizes and coordinates efforts amongst all service providers. With the by-name list, the city will have a more accurate understanding of homelessness and individual needs within the community, and allows us to prioritize services and assistance for the most vulnerable unhoused individuals. And it's done through a data-informed approach. So the by-name list will not end homelessness. Rather, it's a valuable tool to allow the city to prioritize services to the most vulnerable individuals. And the by-name list is not a public document. Staff has held several meetings with RTFH and their consultant to start the process of developing a city-specific by-name list. The next step is to coordinate on the data and methodology to develop a by-name list. Then staff would coordinate with our service providers to receive their authorization for sharing their data. And then the last step would be to establish the joint case conferencing meeting to begin collaborating on this effort. So staff recommends that you receive the report and provide direction to staff on the following. Perhaps just number one, number two, provide direction on the extension of the Jewish Family Services Safe Parking Agreement. And we're skipping number one. That's my understanding.
Okay. And so do we have any questions of clarification? I have, I have a couple here. The, for the safe parking lot, is it permitted in the zone that it's currently in? And what are the, how do we get there legally?
In 2021, the City Council adopted a resolution to declare a shelter crisis per the government code, section eight, nine, eight, six, nine, eight, point two, and point four. Under that, under those government code sections, it allows the city to declare a shelter crisis and to that can suspend any provisions or code or zoning requirements that would impede the development of any homeless shelter. So through the, through that law, the City Council at the time declared a shelter crisis and adopted ordinance to develop a safe parking program.
Okay. And I take it from that answer that it's not currently permitted in a public semi-public zone?
The underlying zoning does not allow homeless shelter. That's correct.
And is there any limitation on the duration of a emergency declaration?
There's no limitation or expiration date on the resolution, but my reading of the law, that the law remains in effect until January 1st of 2036.
What's the January 2036?
That's the expiration of the state law, that the shelter crisis law.
And then the, the safe parking lot again, usage numbers and trends. I saw the aggregate number for overall average usage. I'm curious, are there any trends up or down? Or does it just fluctuate about as far as daily usage? How many cars and how many individuals are housed in our shelter?
I forgot to mention that our community partners are here, the Sheriff's, Retread, Jewish Family Services, and CRC. We have the data for just the average, any specific, we've requested the daily data, but we haven't received that yet. So that could be a question asked to Jewish Family Services.
Okay, great. And then the, the point-in-time count, which is great. I really appreciate having the, the 10-year trend. The clarification question I have, the CRC houses some individuals that are brought in from outside. They really are low-risk or low, low problem. And I believe are that, is there the number of people they have in their facility who are housed? Are they counted in the sheltered numbers of our point-in-time count?
I'm going to defer to CRC on that because I have not volunteered, and I don't want to give you wrong information.
I'm seeing a nod yes from, from John. So, okay. So and that's eight or more, or it's some relatively small number, but significant when we talk point in time. The last question I have is the geographical area for the point-in-time count. During my briefing, there was some question about how far inland it goes, because right now, my understanding it is the City of Encinitas, City of Del Mar, City of Slana Beach, and Santa Gito. And we weren't sure if, if you look at the general plan of the county, that goes all the way to Escondido, and we don't think that's where it goes. So is it the colored ones, the colored, the, the non-gray? Is probably the best way to?
Yeah, it is all of the colored one areas.
Including the white? So it's the non-gray to be?
Yes.
Okay. And, and so I'm good with maps, but could you kind of explain some of the easterly ones? I, I'm not sure I fully understand.
So it's not a great map in terms of roads. We just got this from RTFH today. They, we were grateful to get this, but I don't have anything that has more detailed. Those are our census tracts. So we can provide, we can look into getting you a more detailed one, but for tonight, this is what we got from RTFH.
Okay, okay. But I'm noticing on 171.11, the southern boundary of that is Del Dios Highway, that looks like it's going all the way out to Lake Hodges and, including north of Lake Hodges, but not, not south. And it looks like it's got most of Fairbanks Ranch and the back end of Ranch of Santa Fei in there. And I'm not quite sure how far north it goes, but, okay.
That's Del Dios right there.
I, I just wanted everybody to understand, because there was a question whether Forest Ranch is included, whether Western Escondido was included, because those would skew the numbers. We, we've, I noticed that there's been, I think I've even said it, we assume 90% of the point-in-time count are in Encinitas. As we go into this further, it may not be quite that high, but it could be 80% or something.
Yeah, we feel that we do have the lion's share of that correct, but they don't break it down between Del Mar, Slana Beach, and Santa Gito, so.
And I, I think in the, in the original HAP report that was done in 2020 or 21, it actually refers to the point-in-time count being for the City of Encinitas. So as we revamp this, we'll want to fix that. But, okay. I've got more questions from Councilmember San Antonio.
I just had a question. So we're still operating under an emergency shelter ordinance until 2036? Is that right?
So we have the shelter crisis declaration is in effect until, it can go until 2036, or the City Council can undeclare the shelter crisis. Undo that by resolution.
Thank you.
And Councilmember O'Hara. And Councilmember O'Hara.
I just had a quick clarification on the point in time numbers. I think Mayor Ayers covered the 80 to 90% and how that's what that actually is. So just to be correct in my understanding of how the point in time count is made, community partners and the county get together, they count the number of people, and then they send it to HUD, who then decides what they want the correct number to be, and they send it back to us. That was my understanding, as per a call I made to them today, that HUD finalizes the final number that we get.
Yes, they do a validation process before they publish and release it.
Okay. So we count them, send them to HUD, and HUD tells us if they counted incorrectly or correctly.
And I haven't volunteered, but yes, there's a protocol, right? There's processes in place for, it's all volunteer-based, the counting.
Perfect. Thank you.
And then one last question I forgot. The most recent count, which we have not gotten results, haven't been released from HUD, what night or what day of the year was that point in time count taken in the last six months or whatever, right?
They did it in January of this year, and then we hope it will be released anytime. I've heard different varying reports from May to June.
Okay. But each year, it's been in the January time?
Mayor Ayers, we need to make a motion whether we can continue this meeting or not.
Good point. Yeah, so a little housekeeping. I'll entertain a motion to extend beyond 10 o'clock.
I'll move to extend.
Do I have a second?
Yes. Do we want to limit this? Like we talked about earlier, is this the time to talk about that?
Yeah, yeah. This is a perfectly reasonable thing to do.
So give this an hour, hour and a half, and then we can revisit if we don't get to a solution?
Why don't we give it an hour? And then we try and continue. We've got 20, at least 20, 19 public speakers.
There's two things going on. One, we have to agree to extend past 10. If we want to make a second motion to agree on what that entails, I think we should do that separately because we're talking either time or we're talking items, which is what we were talking earlier.
Yeah.
So first off, I think to extend past 10 o'clock, we should, I think your motion was to do that, and I'll second that motion.
Okay. So I got a motion and a second. If I don't have a substitute, we'll call a question. Any other discussion about further limitations as far as how much, how long we want to go on this? I would recommend an hour on this item.
We have an hour of speakers, so do we want to deliberate at all?
And I think we talked earlier, it'd certainly be worthwhile getting to the safe parking lot because that contract ends June 30. Yeah. We could still come back and have added as an item later, too. So, but, you know, it depends where the discussion goes.
I motion that we take public comment. We discuss the Jewish Families Parking Lot, Jewish Family Services Safe Parking Program and Agreement. And then we continue the item to talk about point number one at our next meeting or another meeting.
Or at a special meeting to be scheduled. So not date certain, but we want to get a, at least a two-hour window for this special meeting. Okay. So that's a friendly amendment. It sounds like you accepted it. If the motion, no, who made the motion? I'm sorry.
Who made the motion?
Oh, here. Okay. So, and I got a motion and a second with the modification.
You made the second?
I did.
Jim, which looked at it. That we will continue, when we continue.
It was just a motion, I don't think. Was there a modification to Jim's motion?
Well, I kind of ran over him in the interest of time. But it was, it was just to say that it wouldn't be date certain. It will go to a special meeting, a date to be determined, when we have plenty of time. So we got a motion and a second. Okay. So any more questions of clarification?
Yeah, one more. And this is for Captain Watts, just more for the public. It's my understanding from what I've heard is that not, the reporting is a self-report when we get these numbers. Is that correct? Or the numbers that we're asking when we go out and do this, this point in time count, it's a self-report, correct?
Yeah, there is policies and procedures in terms of how they count and what, you know.
But it's just self-reporting, correct? And then back to Captain Watts, is my understanding is that it, in a lot of cases, the self-report is that they're locals. They'll say they're locals because the idea that the chance of service goes up. Does that make sense?
I'm not sure that I can confirm that. Yeah.
So with that, public speakers, we've got 19.
Yes, and some with time donations.
And some with time. So we're going to average over, I'm going to say two minutes with time donations. So time donations are worth two. And hopefully that'll get us done before 11 o'clock. And then we still have, we have the two items after, but we are going to continue it, so there'll be plenty of time to discuss. With that, let's call the public.
So first, we have Dave Dean, Christine Schindler, and then Catherine Belir Igasaka or Igasaki, and then John Van Cleef with time donation by Karen Koblenz.
Oh, one other comment is that I will leave the public hearing open, or the public comment open, so that when we do continue it, there'll be an opportunity to get a second bite at the apple. And that way, you don't have to get everything in tonight. If you don't, you'll have time to address the overall issue again, as you learn more and as we learn more.
Hi, I'm Dave Dean. A quick clarification that I'm speaking on the right subject right now. I was going to be talking on the homeless situation. Is this a correct place?
Yep. This is the Homeless Action Plan, which includes the safe parking lot.
Okay, I'm not speaking on the safe parking lot, but homeless issue in general. I spend about three to four hours a day, pretty much seven days a week, at the Rock Garden. And I see the homeless activity that takes place up and down B Street. And I see the homeless people. They generally will be going to Moonlight Beach or to the CRC often. And I see the activity taking place there, and it's disturbing, obviously. Not all people are bad, but some of the activity that does take place is bad. My concern is with the activity that takes place both at Moonlight Beach and the CRC. I think that the issue that I see it is, the CRC does amazing stuff for a lot of people in the community, and I respect that in every way. But I also do commercial real estate, and is in real estate, location, location, location. I see the problem being that the CRC that lends support to the homeless community is in the wrong location. This area is where women and children often spend a lot of the majority of the time, and they should not be subject to the activities that take place with some of the homeless people. It might have been okay 20 years ago for some of the services they provided, but I would like to see them take a new location. I do commercial real estate. I'll lend my services to help them find another location out of downtown. Thank you.
Excellent.
So, good evening again. Christine Schindler, I live in East Encinitas. So first off, I just want to acknowledge, I mean, there's like 40 of us here. And I just, Councilmember Jim called them usual suspects. I would call us frequent flyers. And I'm just impressed that people dedicate as much time as they do. I mean, you dedicate a lot of time. But, so I just want to call out to my compadres here. So twice a month, I come behind safe parking on Saturdays, and I have not seen issues. Occasionally, there may be a car that I have to ask to move along their way. The reason why I come upon them is we do a city cycling class, and we use a parking lot area that's used for safe parking for our drill setup. So I was here at the first meeting where it was discussed. It was the worst council meeting I've ever been to. I'm so happy that this one doesn't have the same feel. There was a ton of fear mongering. There was very hateful speak. It really made me feel not hopeful for the human race. And I'm just very happy to hear, I think that we know now that the things that people were talking about that was going to happen have not happened with safe parking. And I wish we did have the data. I've been curious about that. But I just want to encourage you to renew that program with JFS. I think for people who need it, it's very helpful. And I don't see that we have any issues, and I hope it gets renewed. And then the bigger issue we'll be coming back for. So thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker, it looks like Catherine was just, did not wish to speak. Next is John Van Cleef with time donation from Karen Koblenz, followed by Elena Thompson with time donation from Dennis Kaden, Teresa Moschamp with time donation from Allison Blackwell, and then Bob Thiers with time donation from Suzanne Stone.
Thank you. Good evening, good night, Mayor Ayers and the City Council. Thank you for opening an honest and meaningful dialogue about homelessness during last month's meeting. In our respective roles, we do share accountability to address this issue effectively. I'd also like to affirm my support for extending the JFS safe parking lot through the end of this calendar year. As a homeless service provider, I can attest to the value and importance of this program in helping people move from living in their cars to living in homes. I also want to take a moment to thank staff members Patty Anders and Melinda Dacey for reaching out since last month's staff meeting and helping remove a key barrier so CRC can now direct refer clients to the Buena Creek Navigation Center. And this goes into the sense of partnership and collaboration we've been discussing. Last month's conversation really stayed with me, and it prompted me to think more deeply, do some research, and return with examples about how we can move forward on the Homelessness Action Plan. I want to offer a simple, actionable framework for solutions I call the ABCs of homelessness. A, any bed, like an emergency shelter. B, a better bed, like transitional or supportive housing. C, a continual bed, a permanent place to call home. Encinitas has taken a step forward through, A, the Buena Creek Navigation Center, which offers 12 beds. Encinitas 10-year average of unsheltered individuals is 73, meaning there is capacity to shelter only 17% of the unhoused population. Despite last year's increase in unsheltered homelessness in Encinitas, I'm confident that this year's point in time count, which I understand will be released Monday, will demonstrate that addressing the ABCs of homelessness works. The city of Huntington Beach provides one example of how to address this need. In 2020, with state and federal funds, they created 174-bed navigation center that was sized to match their unsheltered count. With funding from the federal and state government, this project cost the city $9.6 million to build. It's currently operated by an experienced nonprofit with a $3.6 million budget through, that's supported through federal, state, and local funds. In its first two years of operation, it's helped over 500 people, proving that a city's bold investment and strong partnership achieve real outcomes. Beyond that example, we also need to build upon a stable foundation. Built for Zero is a national movement adopted by more than 100 communities, showing that homelessness can be ended. Four communities similar in size to Encinitas, including Bakersfield, California, have reached functional zero for veteran homelessness and chronic homelessness. They succeeded by using real-time data, naming each person, and aligning efforts toward housing outcomes. Encinitas can do the same. I've cited two conservative cities in this example on purpose, demonstrating that homelessness is not a political issue, it's a human issue that requires strategy and resource. I urge the council to pay attention to the ABCs of this model and join the Built for Zero Movement. I encourage the council to consider reinvesting in opening doors program, and most significantly, to follow Huntington Beach's example by citing, building, and funding a shelter. Thank you.
Elena Thompson here. Thanks for keeping me up past my bedtime. I think we're all essentially on the same page here, to the extent that we're all Encinitans. We love our town, and we want to protect it, just like Mayor Ayers in your State of the City, preserving paradise. How do we best do that? Well, it's never a good idea for a city to put in an undemocratic, and unpopular, and unsupported controversial policy, much like the existing HAP and the SPL. Both were instituted by a mere five-person vote of the prior council, not by the community at all, and they're still not supported. In fact, these policies all impact the city's resources, well-being, and the city's budget. The city's public safety budget is $44 million in 2024, and I noticed in the staff report, over 450 sheriff calls were made for unhoused individuals just in January through March of this year. There were over 107 calls for service by the fire team just in January through March of this year, over 172, my Encinitas staff reports. And then there were over 80 calls to the CRC, calls for service. I don't know that our city can support this policy and these expenses. In fact, the current numbers will destroy our city. And it's clear, no one wants these numbers to increase. So I really applaud your efforts and encourage you to get down to business quickly and fix this failed policy. Additionally, the Housing First model highlighted in the HAP is a total failure in the nation and in the state. There's not one city that can demonstrate where Housing First has been a successful model. And it does not address the root causes of homelessness, and this is a well-known fact. People don't need a car to sleep in. They need rehab, reform, jobs, work, income, and housing. But sleeping in a car and sleeping in a parking lot is not compassion. So I would encourage you to pull the plug on the SPL, and I think you can do that safely because there's now two new SPL lots in North County, in Vista and in Oceanside. And certainly, the numbers do represent that it hasn't been a successful program. Only 36 cars parked there in all of 2024? 36? So let's, let's work with our regional partners and our regional cities in the area and come up with a good plan. And finally, I just want to finish on the note that I do take issue with other residents in our town who want to call out and vilify and demonize those of us who are here to protect our town, who are taxpayers and have lived here and worked here our whole lives. And for the record, I grew up poor, and I have homeless members in my family. So I know what I'm talking about, and I refuse to be demonized and pointed out, and I thank you for being bold and taking the action needed. Let's fund these community groups that you heard from tonight. Let's not fund programs that don't have meaningful numbers or meaningful results. Thank you so much, and thank you all. Thank you for listening.
Good evening, Mayor Ayers, Deputy Mayor Lines, and council members. I am very passionate about this issue, as many of you know. In fact, it's our 37th wedding anniversary tonight, and I gave away our tickets to theater event to spend it with all of you. And thank you, Mayor Ayers, for making sure that we did get to speak tonight, to make sure that was not a waste of, yeah, my tickets.
Really?
At the State of the City address, Mayor Ayers emphasized an obligation of our city to compassionately offer services to help our homeless neighbors transition back into society. Effective homelessness action plans include a homeless services manager, a full-time social worker for street-level outreach. social worker for street-level outreach, who is in partnership with law enforcement, like our wonderful city's deputy sheriffs, who are trained in community-oriented policing and problem-solving, collaborative partnership with local organizations that have housing navigators, like the CRC, and its opening doors program was very successful. I hope we see that come back again. The by-name data collection system, and a regional approach to homelessness solutions like the JFS Parking Program and the Buena Creek Navigation Center. Our city's homeless solutions coordinator, Stephen Gonzalez, resigned two weeks ago, I just learned. Stephen was our frontline social worker with the compassion and skills to bridge our homeless back to enter society. At this time, council has not directed staff, as far as I know, to place a job listing to fill this position. The apparent lack of urgency to fill this crucial role suggests a lack of political will of the majority of this council to provide the best standard of practice in homeless management. I had a great discussion with City Manager Campbell, and I strongly support our staff's leadership efforts in their analysis of partnering with the city of Carlsbad, which has a robust Department of Housing and Homelessness. Mayor Ayers, to achieve your goals, you need to urge our new council members to rely on reputable data-driven evidence rather than listening to their supporters on social media who promote the inhumane and failed policy of the criminalization of the homeless. Our current homeless action plan includes the gold standard for homeless solution, and I'm so grateful for all of our staff who helped make that happen, and Deputy Mayor Lines, and actually, and Deputy, and Mayor Ayers. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bob Ayers will be Nicole McCune, Kaylee Levitt, and then James Morton.
Good evening, Bob Ayers, longtime Encinitas resident. In the phrase homeless action plan, I'm hoping you'll focus on the word "plan." A reminder that planning is good, planning based on research, experts, and sound principles is critical. I'm quite sure I said exactly those same words in 2021, standing right here. A plan exists, a plan that was based on research and metrics. Work it, tweak it, but make sure you do it part of a comprehensive plan. There's been much online activity about this in recent days. A lot of the online commentators offer plenty of complaints and cherry-picked statistics. One going around recently refers to the Point in Time Count. The complainers use a one-time higher percentage increase in Encinitas compared to Carlsbad to blame you for doing something wrong. What they miss is what the situation might be like if we did not have any plan at all since 2021. The fact is, there is nothing that Encinitas can do, or Carlsbad, to prevent a person from wandering into our city without a place to sleep. That is beyond the city's control. This is a regional problem, a national problem. It's a real problem. You can't be blamed for these numbers increasing. You can't control it, and you can't take credit for these numbers decreasing either. In this economy, and with these construction prices, it will get worse in spite of your best efforts. We are all frustrated, and that happens with a complex and pervasive problem. But let's not lose our heads. Let's not fall into the trap of treating homeless people as one singular group. They're not. It's a diverse group, and the solutions are complex. What you can do, and what a good plan does, and what you can take credit for, is to help those people who are homeless find housing. You can keep the JFS Safe Parking Lot open. They're happy to keep it open. Let's keep the number of shelters, let's count the number of shelters that are available. Let's count the number of people that we found housing for. We all need good news. Other cities are doing good things. Let's find the best practices and focus on solutions, like hiring more sheriffs that are cops specialists and partner with a HOPE team, something that our sheriff repeatedly supports. Supporting the CRC and others who help people find housing is a homeless reduction plan. You council members who are cozying up to people making their reputations by posting pictures of people living on the streets is not helping anyone. You want to compare to Carlsbad? Just look at the city's staff structure to see the number of staffers dedicated to housing and homelessness. It has an entire department called Housing and Homeless Services. Partnering with Carlsbad is part of a good plan toward a regional solution. I encourage you to do so. Compassionate Encinitans want to see all humans given an opportunity to improve their lives. Planning based on sound research solves problems. Solutions require dedication. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council members, Mr. Mayor. My name is Nicole McCune, and I am Director of the Safe Parking Program. I have the privilege of seeing firsthand the impact that our program has in the lives of our guests. Many Safe Parking guests have a source of income but need a temporary safe place to stay to rebuild stability. Nearly one-third of our guests currently are older adults, people who worked their whole lives and just needed a safe place to stay and an affordable place to live on a fixed income. I want to introduce you to some of the people that we serve. One guest came to us with only a part-time job and no savings. After diligently working with a case manager on career and financial coaching, he was able to double the number of hours worked, doubling his income, saving money, and finding a room for rent. One guest, John, who joined us after a difficult chapter in his life, was with us for six months. And during his time, he worked long hours and kept his eyes open for better opportunities. With support from our team and hard work, John found housing. His determination led him to secure housing. Yet what truly set him apart was his heart. John had a natural gift for making others feel at home. His laughter, kindness, and unwavering respect to our lot made it more than just a place to stay. It became a family. His presence created warmth, and his friendship strengthened our community. As he prepared to move on, John shared something that would stay with us all. If it were possible, I would stay here forever with y'all. I'm going to really miss this family. John reminds us how powerful connection and community can be, especially when life's most uncertain moments occur. Through our partnership, the city with the city, we are able to provide that connection and community to those in need. We work together to break the cycle of poverty. We respectfully ask you to approve the lease extension for our Safe Parking Program through December 2025. Together, let's continue to help people in crisis find their way back to housing and stability. Thank you.
One question. Is there a reason you only chose the six months? Why only extend six months? Why not a year and six months or more?
We have funding through the end of this calendar year.
Okay.
But that's something on the table that we can discuss.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
James, Kaylee is next to speak.
Trying to sneak in there, huh, James?
And then Scott Campbell with time donation from Natalie Satun.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here. I'm Kaylee Levitt, Vice President of Government Affairs at Jewish Family Service. Jewish Family Service has had 170-year history of serving San Diego County residents of all faith and backgrounds, Move Forward Together. We provide compassionate support and supportive services. For the past seven years, we have been operating Safe Parking Lots throughout the county, including this one here in Encinitas since 2020. We are grateful for the city's partnership and the work with the staff to make this go through. We have secured funding through December of 2025, and that's why we're respectfully asking the lease extension through this time period. Safe Parking is a critical early intervention program that helps individuals and families experiencing homelessness, often for the first time. In order to participate in our program, individuals have to apply, they are vetted, and they have to continuously work with a case manager. This creates a model that is more than just a safe and secure place to sleep, is a model where they get financial and career coaching, housing navigation, benefits assistance, and serves in a pathway out of homelessness. We have served an older adult who was suffering from depression, family estrangement, on fixed income. Through our services with case management and therapy, she was reunited with her family. And despite a fixed income, she was able to secure housing with herself and her beloved pets, and now she's able to invite over her family for dinner. Another victim of domestic violence came to us after fleeing her situation with no job and support system. She worked with her case manager to build her confidence, and she landed a full-time position to feel that she loved with benefits and great pay. She now has purchased a tiny home. We are proud of our partnership with the city, and we look forward to be able to continue it. We're bringing the staff, the services, and the funding through the end of this calendar year, and we ask that you continue the lease through the end of December 2025. Thank you so much for your support.
Following James Morton is Scott Campbell with time donation from Natalie Satun, followed by Maria Alshama, and then Sunny Alshama.
Good evening, council members. Opportunity for me to talk about the Public Health and Safety Commission as part of our 2024 work plan. We presented you our outcomes in the March 12 meeting this year. This is just a plug for the people in the community. As part of that action, we had a Subcommittee on Homelessness. Our committee worked with Patty that year, and Greg and her staff, and we put together a summary and a critique perhaps of the HAP. And so that's available to the public, it's available to, council members have seen it, and I'm just here to see that you know about sort of recommendations that were deliberate on and approved by the Public Health and Safety Commission. So thank you very much. Have a good day.
Quick question. Did you take the entire Subcommittee report back to the Public Health and Safety Commission when you said it was approved by? Did they get the entire commission review it?
The entire commission did review the 20...
Good.
Yep.
Okay. Cool. Thank you. And we did receive that.
I'm Scott Campbell, and I'm here representing Encinitas Assistant Review Panel, probably the most data-driven community group in the city. I heard that word earlier. Next slide, please. So we're going to talk about some data that is from the excellent staff report, and we saw this chart earlier, but we're going to talk about it a little bit more. First off, clearly, the goals that were started from this HAP in 2021 have not been achieved. Now, you look at the blue, which is unsheltered, it has grown. The only thing that's really dropped is the sheltered. It's interesting. Next slide, please. Now, people made public requests for police reports, and there's been 97 over a three-year period to one particular address. A lot of these are during the daytime, eight in the morning. It's not people at night, it's not kids, it's not people going to bars. It's people using the services at one particular address. Perhaps the captain could explain what some of those acronyms are at the bottom. I really don't know what they all are. Next page, please. Now, we are actually doing some stuff. Part of this HAP was to make services and to provide stuff. Once again, the data shows that it has not been successful in reducing homelessness. The number, we've put resources in, we've put in plans, we've implemented stuff, but the numbers haven't dropped, not achieved. Next page, please. Now, let's move on to the Safe Parking Lot. Now, this is a two-stage thing. I'm not against the Safe Parking Lot. It has been no problems. People squawked, but there's been no problems. But let's look at the real numbers. The numbers from the report show that there's been 33 households total from 2024, and only seven of those households are from Encinitas. I think we just heard stories about maybe two of them. It's a lot of resources for not much success. Now, households, individuals, there's 25,000 households in the city. That's 2.4 people per house, 63,000. Do them out. This is a very, very small percentage of Encinitas. It's not a vital service to the city. It's vital to the people receiving the services, but not to the city. I mean, we're talking tenths, and hundredths of a percentage. Now, it's also, and we hear this term positive exits, no business is going to be able to survive if they have a 44% success rate. Something is going wrong. You know, we want 100% successful exits into housing. That's our goal, and we're not getting it. We're less. Now, this is a 2021 document, and they talked about data from then. It's not clear the years. The success rate was higher in the past. So actually, our success rate has gone down over time. So once again, we've been putting resources in time and money and bodies, and the results just haven't been keeping up. Now, it's also noticing the large percentage, 33% of people are not even from North County using the services. I don't think that was the intention. I didn't have time, and I looked that up. Next slide, please. Okay, yeah, so back to the Safe Parking Lot, there's 9,000 spaces available per year. We're only using 27.5 of that. We're having a low utilization rate. The services is fine, but it's just not being very effective. Thank you.
Is it Marissa next?
Maria.
All right, Maria.
And she has a time donation.
Good evening, mayor and council members and city staff. My name is Maria Alshama. I'm a longtime resident of Encinitas. I'm also a school social worker. I work in the Oceanside Unified School District. Part of, as a school social worker, a lot of people don't know what we do, but part of what we do is really serve and look out for our McKenney Vento youth, who are homeless youth. I have worked with many homeless youth. I've worked with lots of families who could absolutely use a Safe Parking Program. I spoke in favor of the Safe Parking Program when we were first having this conversation, and as was said before, it was some pretty ugly time here in Encinitas, a lot of nimbism, a lot of fear, and none of that came to fruition, right? This has been like a zero-problem kind of situation that's helped a lot of people. I live in D4, by the way, so, Mr. San Antonio, I'm in your district. Encinitas led the way, so we have this parking program that's helped people. It may not seem like enough people to some of us, but even helping one person, I think, is worthwhile, especially if you're that person, right? We're all valuable. So we led the way in Encinitas in North County, and then Vista followed us, and now Oceanside has followed us. I think that's a big win. That says that other communities looked to what we were doing and decided that it was worth repeating. I'm proud to say I'm on the Board of Directors of the North County LGBTQ Resource Center, and that's where the most recent Safe Parking Program is being housed. We're very happy to be able to support anybody who comes through that community who needs that service to hopefully get into more permanent housing. I wanted to tell you about one family in particular that I've worked with. It was a single mom who was in very dire straits with two daughters, living in their car. And though it is not anything, it's not compassionate. We don't want people to have to be living in their cars, but sometimes that's all they have. And if that's all you got, to keep a roof over your kid's head, that's what you got. Her two kids went to school, they made it to school every day, bless them. They were in JROTC. These kids worked so hard. These were kind, good people, having a really bad time in their lives, and they deserved our compassion and whatever help we could provide for them. And they both graduated, and I'm sure they've gone on to great things. I know they were both college-bound as well. For any of you who might not have done the Point in Time Count, it sounds like there's a lot of pretty basic questions about how that runs. I highly suggest you go sometime. It's so worth your time. It's a very early morning, it's a little bit painful, kind of like being up this late for me. But really, it's such a great way to connect with the people who are in our community. They're our neighbors, they're our people, they are here. Find them. Sometimes, you know, they're not saying they're from Encinitas so that they can get service. I've never come across something like that at all. It's much more like, I'm embarrassed even trying to be waking you up to ask you a few questions. I'm going to just try to be as compassionate as I can be. How long have you been here? Are you a veteran? Some of those kinds of questions. It's a very humbling experience. I look forward to it every year because of how much it humbles me and because of the connection that I can make with people who just may be having one friendly face of somebody saying... saying, hey, here's a gift card, thank you for answering our questions, are you doing okay, we care about you, is pretty meaningful, so I highly recommend that. Thank you for your time.
Kim Piker, followed by Bob Kent, Matthew Simons, and then Marco Gonzalez.
Hello, I'm Kim Piker, and I've lived here since 1992. I play pickleball at the Senior Community Center, and I'm sure that you are very happy that I am not here to talk about pickleball. I'm here to talk about the senior in the community center where the safe parking is housed, and I often go there, it opens at eight, pickleball starts at eight. I often go there to miss traffic and not to clog up the roads and so on, so I often get there like 7:30 to 7:40 and kind of hang out. And I want you to know, you see nothing. You see nothing. As a matter of fact, when I first started doing that, I was like, wait a minute, isn't the safe parking here? And you see nothing. So, one of the reasons I'm saying this is because when this came up three years ago, a lot of people were saying this is, the safe parking is near our school and near our children. I'm not hearing that this time, because maybe people have figured out that's not an issue, and I'm just here to verify that that is not an issue. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, city council members. My name's Bob Kent, Encinitas resident. I respectfully request that you vote to authorize the extension of the successful GFS Safe Parking Program through December 2025, and consider other options beyond this date. With incomes not keeping up with our high housing costs, and without a strong financial footing, many people are living one paycheck, one car repair, or one medical emergency away from not being able to pay their rent, including seniors, especially seniors on a fixed income, who are very vulnerable throughout our county to experiencing homelessness. So now, more than ever, having a safe, reliable, and dignified place to sleep at night is critically important for those individuals who are living in their vehicles, many who are only recently experiencing homelessness. The Safe Parking Program is truly the last rung of homelessness prevention. The program fully vents all clients, and through JFS Client-Centered Case Management Services, has demonstrated success by helping individuals regain their footing, providing a sense of safety in a time of upheaval, and a bridge from homelessness to safe and stable housing, which is a key tenet of the Homeless Action Plan. Also, the extension of the program will not cost the city any money, as JFS has secured funds to continue the program through the end of the year. Addressing and solving homelessness is complex, and there is no one-size-fits-all solution. The Safe Parking Program is a good targeted solution, demonstrating how the public sector and service providers like JFS can work together to help people whose only form of shelter is their vehicle, and their only asset. So helping, to help those people make meaningful progress to find permanent housing is essential. Please vote to extend the Safe Parking Program with JFS through the end of this year, so that we may continue to help our unhoused neighbors in need. Thank you.
Matthew Simons. Matthew's followed by Marco Gonzalez, Dodd La Ponzo, and then Judy Burlefein.
Good evening, council members, mayor, my name is Matt Simmons, and I'm a resident of Encinitas, the national expert on the applied usage of technology to address homelessness. I want to begin by honoring the late, great Bill Walton. So, Bill was not only a Celtics legend, but a fellow jam band enthusiast and a passionate supporter of the Lucky Duck Foundation. At a press conference with Lucky Duck, Bill made a heartfelt plea to Mayor Todd Gloria, in which he stated, "We cannot allow people to continue living on the streets, in the parks, at the schools, on the sidewalks, or on the bike paths, many of whom are committing serious crimes." I couldn't agree more. When first responders are overwhelmed, even petty crimes go unchecked. That sends a message that we're willing to tolerate chaos. We cannot afford that, but enforcement alone isn't the answer. Our police and outreach teams, they need the right tools, not just to uphold the law, but to connect people to real solutions, shelter, hygiene, rest, and services that lead to stability. Criminalizing people simply for existing doesn't solve anything, but ignoring the impact of disruptive or illegal behavior doesn't either. Furthermore, it is worthwhile to note that the state, the City of Encinitas applied for encampment resolution funding, up to $4 million, and withdrew the application because of two simple questions, it was the following one. One of those was about permanent supportive housing, goal number three of the HAP. That was a mistake. We needed that money, and I don't know why we couldn't say we were going to use the encampment resolution funding to build up our PSH, that was an eligible expense. We need to do better. Thank you.
Marco Gonzalez with Coast Law Group here in Encinitas. Thirty-five years ago, one of my first jobs was here in Encinitas, serving yogurt, TCBY yogurt in the Wigan Plaza. We had a homeless guy who used to come by about once a week and throw a few nickels on our counter, and we'd give him a large yogurt and send him outside, and even at 19, 20 years old, we had compassion because we're human. And at that time, it wasn't that unusual to go down to Swamis and go surfing and seeing a bunch of stoned-out hippies who lived in their vans, who parked up on Santa Lejo or Vulcan or any backstreet, and it was part of the fabric of our community. The difference is, now, we have a certain cadre of activists, if you will, who run around claiming this parade of horribles that will come from things like, say, parking lots. And we heard it with the Leach Tag Foundation project. We heard that we'd have van lifers roaming our streets and being called here from all corners of the nation, that we'd have criminals, druggies, and vagrants who would have nowhere to go after the lot closed, and that property values would plummet, and the sheriffs would be called to the lot every single day. Well, when the sheriff got up and gave his opinion on the problem with the safe parking lot, he said it was these activists who were harassing people, and harassing Leach Tag, and harassing the homeless service providers. The fact is, the parade of horribles never occurred, and while I have a lot to say about housing first, I'll save that to the next meeting, but I would say, it costs the city nothing to extend the JFS permission until the end of the year. There's no good reason to halt it at this point. Those entities who would claim to be significantly data-driven, I find it a little bit hard that they, to digest that, they can't understand why it would be more difficult today to have successful exits, given that we know housing is astronomically more expensive than it was even four or five years ago. So, just do the right thing, we'll talk again at the next meeting.
Hi, I support the, I'm Judy Burlefein, I support the extension, and one thing that got me thinking, this program doesn't cost us anything, but if we don't do this program, what does it cost? If we criminalize homeless people, we all pay as taxpayers for our prisons. So, there is no option to do nothing. It's just, do we want an option where we help people get into housing, or do we want to spend our money on more prisons? Thank you.
I just want to thank you all for having this program going. I was here at that meeting when we started it, and I trust that you will continue it because it's a small, but critical, and really important act of godly kindness to these people, and it could be one of us. Thank you.
That concludes speakers, then we did have seven individuals that registered support for the JFS parking lot, but did not wish to speak.
Okay, very good. I've got Councilmember Schaefer up.
Oh. I appreciate everybody speaking, and I think this is a very near and dear issue to all of Encinitas, and like we've talked about, the region and the country. I think, I think we're talking about a couple of different items here, even though we're lumping into homelessness, we're talking homelessness, we're end up, we end up lumping it all into maybe our own experiences or whatever, but the fact of the matter is, I think most, if not all, Encinitans are compassionate. I mean, we just spent this, the first part of this evening, well, one, giving a memorial to a young woman that never should have passed. The sheriffs that we have, the fire department that we have, they're making calls consistently and to a group of individuals, again, lumped into homelessness. And it's not, at the CRC, the 400-plus families that are receiving services and doing all these great things, but I think we bring up compassion, we talk about it, and I don't think we fully rectify what it is we're talking about. I wrote it down so I don't get too far off. Compassion is not, is not measured by what we tolerate, but what we are willing to confront. For the good of everyone, among our unhoused neighbors are individuals who are truly struggling, people who need support, shelter, and a path forward. But we also, this is the other part of that group, this, the separate part, the two separate issues of maybe two different groups that we're talking tonight. But we also have, have to acknowledge that within that population are a small number of individuals who behave, whose behavior endangers others. Those who repeatedly refuse help, engage in violence, or elicit the vulnerable around them. Exploit, sorry. Turning a blind eye to this is not compassionate. It's a disservice to both the community and those experiencing homelessness who want a way forward. So those within the homeless community that want those services, that are using the services, that are providing, that are provided for them, it's giving, it's putting tarnish on that. And so it's deliberately, for the people that we are trying to help and that want the help, aren't necessarily getting it, because I call it the As and the Fs, right? A lot of the kids in school get, that have As, get a lot of attention, a lot of the kids that have Fs get a lot of attention, but the ones in the middle are the ones that suffer because of those bad actors. True compassion means drawing a line, it means creating order, restoring dignity, and ensuring that that help reaches those who are ready to receive it. And that's a big part of it, those who are ready to receive it. Earlier today, we're talking about addiction is considered a disability, and those who are in addiction are considered disabled. So, for us to not address that right now, and I think the big thing that I think most of the issues, and personally, I have two people in my family that I share blood with that have had their own issues in this town, one is of recent at Better Buzz, and it's my niece, and a homeless man pulled out, he was playing with a knife at the restaurant. She said it was a big knife, and at that point, they decided to get up and leave, and at that, it dawned on me right now, as somebody who happens to be in a position to do something about this, that has to end. What is happening in our cities since we've seen this, since 2020, since, it's kind of where it's, it's been growing since, and it's those bad actors that Captain Watts spoke about a couple of weeks ago in his quarterly review. The amount of calls they take, that young lady that lost her life, that's 450 sheriff calls, that's 400 calls just since January that are firefighters are going out and not enforcing other petty craft, time, or sorry, petty crime, speeding, running red lights, all those other things that we could be minimizing and growing a safer community. So, let us be the city that is not only with, the acts not only with our heart, but with clarity, courage, and accountability. That's the part that's missing for the quote "bad actors." Everybody here has accountability. You guys drove here tonight, you drove, you're going to drive home, you're accountable to the laws of the road, you're accountable to pay your stuff on time, and your taxes, and all those other things. What I'm talking about specifically right now is those 15 to 20, or whatever is bad actors that are really giving us a hard time for the rest of the Encinitas and the entire community to come together and be actually compassionate. When you refuse services one, two, three, 10 times, or you go to jail, and you're out five days later, and you come right back and you're doing the same thing, taking up resources, it's not compassionate. It's neglect. And that's, that's the thing that I think we want to divulge, and as we go into the conversation, I know that tonight we're talking about the JSF, I just want to make sure that because this is a continued conversation, and because we just are compassionate, and I just talked to the city manager in our off time about funding all of those groups, up to 20,000, all of them, pulling from our own unfunded account, because it drives more community. But our job up here, first and foremost, is safety and security, period. If we don't do that, we don't have another job. We don't have time to spend on infrastructure, we don't have time to spend on mobility, anything else. The first thing we have to require as a government is safety and security, period. So, that's what I want to, when we do get back to the HAP, that's what I want to talk about that night, and that's what I'm going to be talking about. So I'm saying that here now, so that there's time to talk about it, people are going to be open again, so come up and please talk about it. Or make an appointment, let's get, let's have a conversation about it between now and then. But that's what I am, I am no longer going to allow these, like Mr. Dean here said, the bad actions on a primary beach of, I'm not going to allow that anymore, because I'd be remiss if something happened to anybody in this town for any reason because of that.
So I want to keep an eye on the clock too here.
Yeah, I get it. I'm just, I'm just putting that out, so.
Yeah, and we're trying to focus first on the safe parking lot, and so I'll recognize Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Thank you, mayor. I want to acknowledge all the speakers in the room because you are a wealth of knowledge, and I appreciate everything I've heard. Thank you for coming. One of the things I'm going to focus on, and what you've said, and I'm glad you've said it now, is we could do better, and I think we can. I've been here through the arc of us developing a homeless action plan through now, where we got to see what it looked like when we initiated it just three short years ago, what it looked like when we started the Buena Creek Navigation Center just one year ago, and the, this data here is good. I am so glad that we've been able to show that we can help some people. It's good, but we can do better, and I feel the frustration, but we're not going to do better if we don't fund programs and/or approve programs, because some, like the Jewish Family Services Safe Parking, is just us agreeing to have them present and have them there. When we come back around after this meeting, and we talk more about the HAP, sorry, it's late, I want to focus on the fact, we can only do better if we continue to invest resources and be as smart as possible, and we can do both better in the future. And I want to challenge us to look at what we're, what our programs are, and how we can improve, and how we can continue. I have a knot in my stomach right now, because I know we no longer have our homeless resources manager who left us 10, 14 days ago. We don't have coverage right now, and this just gives me, we don't have outreach. We've lost something we just built and gained for so long, and now we don't have it. We need to fund that program, we need to partner with the City of Carlsbad, we need to see how much more we can partner with the county. Right now, they just have three half-days here, that's it, that's all we have for outreach. And yet, I'm hearing people say, this is a huge problem, and we need to solve it, so let's get our best thinking caps on and solve it. I want to talk about the Jewish Family Services, and I do want to, and I hope it's not premature, but move to approve their contract through December of 2025. I want to kind of expedite that dialogue, I will move to approve it. I want to provide some reflection in that when it first came before us three years ago, I didn't support it, if any of you remember that vote, and I regret that I didn't, and I will admit, that was a mistake, and I know how valuable it is, I've done a tour of it, I've talked to the leadership about what their services are, I've talked about who they are catching before they're fully homeless, and connecting to services, sometimes it's a job, sometimes it's housing. I just think it's a marvelous program that has shown us I just think it's a marvelous program that has shown us some great success. And so I don't want to make the same mistake, and I would encourage that my council members, my fellow council members consider that and approve it as well. Thank you.
Anybody else want to go? Otherwise, I'll hop in. Go ahead, Jim.
So, you know, we're not gonna talk about the HAP tonight, but as part of looking at the HAP long-term, I went down and broke down the elements of the HAP into successes, failures, different things that we do, and, you know, right now, we're talking about the Jewish Family Services Safe Parking Program. And I'm gonna circle back to when it was opened. And I'm gonna say, and I've said this all along, I think, I think part of the challenge with that parking lot was, I don't think it was opened with a lot of transparency, and not for anybody in this room's reason, or purpose, or anything like that. And I think that that has carried with it, unfortunately, and I truly think that's really unfortunate. I think whatever that distrust was that happened at that time, it's been really hard to shake when you talk about this program, and I don't think that that's fair. When I look at this program, I think, Maria, I think you said it, you know, if we only help 1%, that's 1%, that's a big deal, right? That's one person who does end up on the street. I also, I live within walking distance. I've walked up there several times to look at it myself, to check out its usage, to see if I felt safe, different things like that, just to check out what you hear. And I, you know, I wish, I wish the usage was higher, it is what it is. I also believe that this is an excellent tool for our Sheriff's Department. We are going to be moving forward, and I'm not gonna dive any more into this than this one statement, we're gonna be moving forward to supporting our Sheriff's Department better, with better prosecution from our City Hall in support of them so that they can do their job. One of this still involves putting the services out there available for the people that can be helped. And the Jewish Family Services Safe Parking Program is one of those services that can be put out there. It's another tool that the sheriffs will have in their usage. So the HAP is a whole different conversation, but if we're talking about the Jewish Family Services Safe Parking Program, I support it. I don't think it's perfect. I don't think any program is perfect, but I think, I think that it is one of the programs in this HAP that is actually something I picked out as working, quote unquote. So I'm gonna move forward to support it when that motion goes, but I know that other council members also want to speak.
Can I go, Bruce?
Yep.
I mean, I support it as well. I mean, there, you're right, it's not perfect, but it does help, if it does help one person, it helps one person. Is it perfect? No. You know, from just some of my notes, it's, you know, maybe one of the problems is that it's, you know, you have to be pre-screened and enrolled, you know, you can't just walk in, so it's tough for the sheriffs to move some of these car campers and, hey, you got a place to stay, not here, you can just go over there. That's tough. So, I mean, you know, could it be served better? Could there be better enrollment? Could there be better use of those empty parking spots? You know, I just, sure, I wish I had my notes for Scott Campbell's thing, but the amount of empty spaces per year is like 9,000, that's, that's too bad. That's, was it?
Not empty, that's total capacity.
Oh, okay, okay, my bad. But I do support it. I mean, for, till the end of the calendar year, I mean, it is, I think it's valuable for right now, so I support it.
Okay, I'll hop in next. First, I want to make a comment about the homeless services manager position that is open, and that's just a transitory temporary thing. It's not the city, the city council could say, don't hire it, but quite frankly, it's budgeted, it's a staff issue, and I don't know if the city manager would like to address, but I have heard nothing but you plan to hire a person into that place, and we're just in the temporary interim.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. Yet, we do, that position is still there. I'm actually working with the team, which is Patty right now, Roy, Melinda. We're looking at the best way to get those services for the city. So with having one homeless solutions coordinator, it's one person. We're looking at, is there other ways that we can contract with other organizations that we can get five-day-a-week coverage, that they can support the HOPE team? We're looking for the best user resources and the folks that provide that, because, I mean, frankly, we don't have a social services division or department in the city. I mean, we obviously have our homeless outreach and our team, and we've got our housing choice voucher, and we look at that, but, you know, we don't have the expertise to provide social services, but there are people out there that do. So right now, my team and I are looking at the best use for our city resources to get the best services for our city and the most coverage we can. So we are currently doing that, so we are working on that, but we're figuring out what might be the best path.
Yeah. So I'll go on talking about the safe parking lot and support there, but first, I think I gotta frame, frame what's going on. If you look at the HUD, they categorize into three categories homeless, transitional, episodic, and chronic. And I think the majority of the problems we see here in the city between most residents and homeless are chronic homeless with this. I would, I would pose that the people in the safe parking lot are typically episodic or pre-homeless and transitional, and that that's a very different discussion. And I always go back, and you'll hear more about this next time around when I talk about it. Fundamental difference is the homeless that are going to, or the ones using the safe parking lot, they want help. They are willing to take help, they're willing to take services. There's a good portion of the homeless in Ensenitas, probably about a third roughly, based on the numbers I've read, that are willing to take, take help. And then you hear the other two-thirds typically referred to as service resistant. Therein lies our problem. It's in the service resistance is where we see the grind between people wanting to, you know, be safe, feel safe in the city, and this is not the place, it never was, and now, you know, I was actually kind of surprised when I read the report, and I said, December 31st, this is like a slam dunk, you know? December 31st, they'll be here in no time, so I have no, I will second the motion by Deputy Mayor Lyons. I would ask, and this doesn't have to be part of the motion, I would ask that the staff also, between now and the HAP meeting, investigate the zoning matrix changes required, or what options we have to get this out of an emergency declaration. At some point, I feel that as a council member up here, I'm responsible not to have a permanent emergency, because we should be able to fix our zoning, basically, and decide if this is where we want it, or if we have a better place. But first step is, we could just fix the zoning, then the emergency declaration is not necessary. Ultimately, we have a guess based on what I learned tonight until 2036, but I don't want to leave it to the last minute. And then I would also ask that staff return with daily numbers over the history of the parking lot, so that we can see the trend and flow, and it's not just today, and it's not just for this report, a year from now, I would like to see it, two years from now, just like we have the point-in-time count over 10 years right now. I think having multiple years of data on a daily basis, so you can see the seasonal fluctuations, it's what any business would do, and I think we would all, it's data-driven decision-making at its best. So those are recommendations, if I got a consensus from, from my council on that, but I second the item, and with that, I'll yield to Councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to Captain Watts, and what are your thoughts? Do you like, do you, do you appreciate the safe parking lot? Is it a benefit to what you see on your side of the House?
It does give our, the deputies that are out enforcing the overnight sleeping in cars, it gives us the ability to offer that resource and give them a place to go that is safe and a legal place for them to be.
Awesome. Thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, I echo what everybody else is saying, and I would support it as well.
Okay, Councilmember Schaefer, or, sorry, O'Hara.
I wasn't gonna dive into it, but you kind of brought it up, and actually, we're not talking about the HAP this week, but we have the open position for the social manager, and I, I think it's almost a fortuitous event, in the case that we are gonna be looking at the HAP, and now, when our city manager and our staff are looking to fill that position, they will have a clear idea of what that position is going to need to entail and its responsibilities. So while it's not perfect, it's not ideal, I'm looking forward to get the person in there who can do what we're gonna need going forward, and I feel that this is a great opportunity to do that. So that's my only conversion about that, just because it came up, but I'm gonna let you guys go, let's go vote, let's go.
Okay, and no other comments? We'll call the question? And do we need it read back?
The motion I have is just to extend the agreement through December 2025.
Yep.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We would have to bring back a resolution in order to extend the program, so we will, I would suggest to modify your motion for staff to bring back a resolution to extend the agreement, so.
So modified?
Yeah, I agree, too. Good catch.
Okay.
That's why we read them back, especially when it's 11:10 at night. Yeah.
That's okay. Motion carries unanimously.
There we go. Thank you. Okay, we've got two more items. Right, yeah, two more items, so if you want to stay, stay, but if you want to leave quietly, and let us keep going.
1 o'clock, here we come.
Yeah, really, yeah. Let's see, we only need a quorum, so if two of us could leave, so 12A, and this would be Councilmember O'Hara, initiated item, and I'll let you read it.
All right, as you know, the...
Yeah, Karen, if you can take it out, we want to go home, too.
Okay, so we've recently been working with the residents in the neighborhood of Clark and Union as a council member and as staff to address the challenges that are occurring with the upcoming Clark Ave, Clark, Clark Street apartments, trying to mitigate some of the damage that has been put upon those, those neighbors. And essentially, we've come to the point with increased traffic volumes and development of intersection of Saxony Road and Union Street, currently already experiencing higher volumes of traffic that affect the residents' ability to safely navigate the intersection and exit their neighborhood and enter their neighborhood safely, as well as speeds on the street. We see a challenge currently, and we see an increasing challenge over time, and with that, previously, staff had suggested putting a roundabout in that area. When we visited with the residents of Saxony, sorry, residents of Saxony and Union, Union Street specifically, they specifically requested stop signs. They did not feel that a roundabout would do the job of allowing them to enter and exit their neighborhood effectively and safely. I think we had testimony here a couple of weeks ago by public speaking on another, another issue, that it was hard to enter some of the streets when you were not on the main street for roundabouts, so kind of supporting that. So we did have staff look into assessing whether a stop sign could go there. Staff came back with it not really, not really as something that required a stop sign. We're going ahead, and we're moving in the direction of, since we're acknowledging that that intersection needs to be addressed and altered to deal with the increased traffic as well as the upcoming challenge of Clark Ave, to provide the residents with their need of stop signs at that intersection. So I'm requesting staff, I'm requesting council to, okay, staff, design and install a stop controlled intersection at the intersection of Union Street and Saxony.
If I may, if council does approve this tonight, what we'll have to do is, we will have to bring this back in a resolution, so we will, we would bring back the design, and we would bring back the resolution if so directed tonight.
Would that include the warrant analysis, even though it fell short in the accident history?
Yes, we could bring that back as well with that information.
Do we have to redo budgeting? Just kidding, I'm just messing with you.
No, guess what? It would, that falls under general mobility, which, which was allocated, and that was the reason we need that, so thank you.
I'm just giving you a hard time.
Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Right, I just want to tell, let the council know I support Councilmember O'Hara's recommendation. Usually, I look for a warrant, meaning it's been justified by our traffic analysis, but the success of a, of a recent project like this, the one, the stop signs on La Costa at Sheridan, I think that really helped that roadway, and, and it wasn't warranted by the classic definition, so I just want to let, if there's a motion that's put forward, I would just want to let you know I'll support it.
Great. And I'd also like to hop in, I put in, or advocated as a activist for many a stop sign along Ranches Santa Fe Road, and I can't tell you the number of times that traffic engineers have recommended a roundabout there, and that would require, out there, it would have required right away from all four corners, so people, there would be some condemning or whatever, and to get the proper-sized circle, and I've talked to traffic engineers that made the comment about, yeah, it's great until you get high volume on the, on one road, and then the side roads get locked out, and then advantage, and I live on one of those stop signs at Olive Crest and Ranches Santa Fe, and it went from not being able to access the Ranches Santa Fe Road to having the right to access it. We do have to be very careful with people running stop signs, and that, that's why I was such an advocate for the budgeting of additional traffic. When I did my ride-along out there, that very intersection, people ran that stop sign in the middle of the night all the time, and we caught two, or he caught two. So I am very supportive of this. I would like the data back about the warrant. I think almost none of the ones that are leaving behind were warranted either, so I think this is a good place, and the spacing warrants it, and it will help calm traffic, so. Anybody else?
Well, I was gonna say, I think within that, one of the things we talked about was, stop signs are not as expensive, as expensive as roundabouts. And so if we put the stop sign in, and we decide that there needs to be a change, it is not that hard to change. Furthermore, I know that staff and the city will put out notification signage to let people know that a stop sign is being implemented, controlled intersection, stop-controlled intersection is going to be implemented there, as well as leading up to and for some time after, to let people know, to help people avoid accidental roll-throughs. And with that, I think we're, we also talked about, and it's not on here, but I'd love to see if we could get a crosswalk added for that group that wants to get to that trail on the east side of the road.
And did you second this, or if?
I'll second, whatever.
And I just do want to let you know, for Councilmember O'Hara and the rest of council, we can add a crosswalk, and actually, we had discussion with Leach Tag, because they actually have the path on the other side of the street, and they were very happy if we put a crosswalk in.
Does anyone make the motion? So, Councilmember O'Hara, did you want to make the motion?
I can motion to approve.
Oh, okay.
Also, I think this is good chat, even though it's not warranted in some other areas, but this is in front of the Clark apartment, I mean, this is forward-thinking, which is a lot of times, which is really one of the things that, big issues of being, why, one of the reasons being up here, or coming up here, trying to, is to start being forward-thinking in our infrastructure, everything that we're doing, though I don't want more stop signs in town, it's just, it's where we are.
So who made the motion?
I didn't.
Okay, and who seconded?
I'll second.
I think Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Well, I just said I'd support it, so if someone else wants to second.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Councilmember San Antonio?
I'm just trying to help the clerk here. At 11:19.
And it does include the crosswalk? I just want to be clear.
Can we add the crosswalk to it?
I did, I made sure with Jill, we will go ahead and bring that back at the same time.
Perfect.
Good.
So it'll be to... So it'll be to design and install a stop-controlled intersection at the, at the intersection of Union Street and Saxony Road, including a crosswalk, and then also to bring back the necessary resolution to the city council.
And it's a three, is that two crosswalks? One across Union and one across on which side of, of?
You could cross it on.
Oh, sorry.
The east side of Saxony, you'll be able to cross.
Yeah, well, but there's basically three places to put a crosswalk. Do you want it on the north, the south, and the west? Which one, all of them, or two of them?
I would leave it to, to engineering to decide the best, the best choice on that.
Thank you, I was going to say that we'll have the traffic engineer make a recommendation.
Including three potential crosswalks?
Including crosswalks as recommended by the traffic engineering group.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay.
And we will call the question.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, let's move on to Our Neighborhood Voice. Oh, we didn't have any public speakers, I hope.
We did not have any public speakers. We had three individuals who registered support, but did not wish to speak.
Very good. And do we have any public speakers on 12B?
Yes, we do, we have five.
Five, okay, great. So let's start with 12B. Alight, you have the floor, and who wants to speak, of the two of you?
Okay. Yeah, this is a large portion of really what got me involved in even wanting to be on city council at this point, was to help defend ourselves from the overreach of, basically, the state taking over a large portion of our zoning, and telling us how we're going to grow and develop our towns, which is really the reason that we incorporated back in 1986, to defend ourselves from the county at that time. And here we are, now having to redo the thing against a much larger government at this point, fourth-largest economy in the world. So for us to fight the, the dollar amount of a group like that is going to be significant. And what we're inducing here, introducing here is the the goal in combining with other communities throughout the state to defend ourselves, and the amount of legislation that's coming out of Sacramento, creating the overreach capability that they've, they've put behind them, so.
Yeah, I mean.
So the background real quick is Sacramento lawmakers have passed over 400 laws in the last eight years alone, stripping away local control over development, and allowing large developers to bypass nearly all local rules. The city of Encinitas has been negatively impacted by these laws. Over, I'm sorry, Our Neighborhood Voices is a ballot initiative to restore local control to municipalities by amending the California State Constitution. Previous individual efforts at the grassroots level, as individual cities, have led to the understanding that cities will need to create a coalition to support efforts to restore local control to municipalities in the state of California. The City Council of Encinitas endorsement will assist in getting the initiative on the state ballot. So that's where we are right now, trying to push our, our weight around as little Encinitas, but trying to unite with all the other communities that are willing to do this. And Our Neighborhood Voices is one of the forefront groups, so anything else?
No, I, I fully support this. I believe this is why we were voted into office. This is one of the biggest reasons we were voted into office. And one of the most important things that we need to do for this city is work towards restoring local control. Currently, I don't know if Our Neighborhood Voices will, will get passed, even if it gets on the ballot. But I know if we don't try, it won't. And I know that everything we can do to support getting our local control back, at the state level, at the Sandag level, which we already put forward, something that Bruce and I are on a committee, we're going to finish this letter up and get it going. Everything we can do is what we should do. And in this regard, it costs us nothing. We add our voice to it, we support it. And maybe we talk about it more, and maybe, maybe, just maybe, more of our population starts to realize that it's going to be up to us in 2026 to get this done, to vote the right people in who want to give us our local control back, and to let them know. Starting points, hey, all these letters say you're doing a bad job in Sacramento. You're violating our constitutional rights, as individuals and as cities. I'm tired of standing around watching. I watched the last council stand around and say, we can't do anything, our hands are tied. This may not be the most potent thing we can do. But it's something. And we're going to move forward with every something that we can, until we find the right spot, and we get something to happen up here. I know I'm committed to that, I know a number of us campaigned on that. And I, as small as this is, I think it's huge, and I support it with all of my heart.
Okay, and I think we have public comments, so I would invite the public comments up now.
Dave Dean, followed by Molly Hintlin, Karen Caden, Dennis Caden, and then Mike Lewis.
Hi, Dave Dean, just wanted to say thank you for this initiative or attempt. I 100% support it. Worst decision I've seen is when we closed down the beaches at the start of COVID because of state mandate, which was insanity, and I 100% local control support. Thank you.
Good evening, council, it's late. I applaud this initiative, thank you, and I support the proposal. We absolutely need to gain back local control of both land use planning and zoning. One size does not fit all, we all know that. But what's being affected more than just these big developments are the ADU laws. There's a new ADU law, SB 1211, and it's more egregious, relaxing all kinds of judgment and use of land, and it's relaxing laws on easements, setbacks, not mandating parking, and it's really going to affect residential community, and at a home-level density. We have to, we have yet to see the impact like what is happening in San Diego, around the college area in Clermont, and a lot of it's being affected by SB 9. But ADUs have gone off the charts and need to be part of this initiative. Thank you.
Hi, council, Karen Caden here. I am reading on behalf of Susan Turney, Encinitas resident, Our Neighborhood Voices board member. Susan could not be here tonight. I want to thank Jim and Luke for placing the resolution on the agenda. I'm sorry to hear that it was 12B. To the council, please vote to approve the resolution to support Our Neighborhood Voices. Take a stand alongside the growing number of cities statewide for local control and against Sacramento legislation and inhibits the ability to local government to effectively plan their own cities. There are more than 400 housing bills that purport to address the lack of affordable housing. Most have zero affordable housing requirements, proving that they have nothing to do with their purported goal of producing lower-income affordable housing. Instead, they have everything to do with creating luxury market-rate housing. This is highly profitable to developers, yet delivers virtually no benefit to lower-income earners as claimed, and does not help us meet state mandates. These one-size-fits-all, these one, yeah, these one-size-fits-all laws seek to remove land use control from every city in the state, enforce high-density overdevelopment without regard to our traffic concerns or location. Think the Goodson Apartments, Quail Gardens Drive Project, Pyra's Point, and other projects. Zoning and land use authority should rest with those who govern and live in our communities. We can still comply with housing production requirement by law, but without placing unsustainable stresses on local infrastructure, public safety, resources, and roads. The goal of Our Neighborhood Voices is to keep fighting individual projects always at great personal cost to residents, and to restore local control statewide. Encinitas City, can council, please take this important step of public support by supporting Our Neighborhood Voices' goal by passing the resolution. And mine is short. I did send an email to you all. We are in favor of the goal to support the Neighborhood Voices by adopting Resolution 2025-61. This is an opportunity to preserve our communities and have local control. We need to inform and educate our voters that Our Neighborhood Voices are to help restore local control throughout, through a ballot measure in 2026. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council, thanks for being here. I'm Dennis Caden, also from Encinitas. Last month, on April 18th, was the 250th anniversary of the famous ride of Paul Revere. And we all know the poem by Longfellow where he was shouting out, "The British are coming, the British are coming." Actually, he didn't scream anything, because the British were there occupying us, and he couldn't scream, because otherwise, they would have arrested him and taken him in. There were three people that did that ride. At one point, they crisscrossed. So this is our moment to crisscross with Our Neighborhood Voices and make sure that everybody in Encinitas especially hears the message that the developers are coming, or the, our land use is being taken away. So maybe in your resolution, if you could add some kind of language or intention to communicate what we are doing with everybody in Encinitas. I think Encinitas could be the point of the spear, not only in San Diego County, but in California, because I feel we've gotten hurt the most by the egregiousness of the housing element and taking away our local control. And the consternation you had on the Quail Gardens Apartments showed that. I think Encinitas is ready. The first time we went to incorporate, it failed, and then four years later, it passed, like, because everybody was mad at what was going on and the overdevelopment. And so we're still mad in Encinitas, and we need to carry that enthusiasm for this elsewhere. Thank you.
I'm only going to speak because I waited this long to speak, so. The last time I was up here, I was fighting against the ridiculous dysfunctional roundabout on Eolus and Andrew, and they replaced that with stop signs, and they work really great. So I'm a big fan of stop signs, I think that's a good one. So ditto on what all of these folks have said. As you know, Sacramento is completely flooding the zone with new legislation, literally every month. I mean, new stuff comes out in order. Right now, there's, in addition to 1211 that, that the young lady just spoke about, you've got SB 79 coming down the Pike, which is huge. I mean, it's just a massive expansion of high-density, multi-story, seven, eight, nine-story buildings within a half-mile of a transit center, which reaches, you know, halfway downtown and, and towards the Acadia, and to the ocean, and back across to the freeway. So it's the impact of this central planning model that you see coming out of a, a guy that was born in New Jersey with a Harvard education, driven out of, primarily a senator out of San Francisco, is really offensive to me. I'm a native Californian, I've been, I've only been here 48 years, but in Encinitas, but I grew up in Manhattan Beach. So I spoke actually at a town hall recently, where there must have been 250 outraged citizens there. And what's happening is the timing is right. The, the, nobody listens to anything until the sticks start going up next door. And there's enough sticks going up next door to, certainly here in San Diego. This whole program was sort of done in the, under the darkness of COVID. And they passed all this legislation, the impact of which is only being felt now. And so they started sort of San Diego, moved south, moved north. They're feeling it in other communities in a big way now, and there's a high level of anger, frustration, and alertness, virtually in every city in California. And I'm currently talking to a number of these groups that are coalescing around Our Neighborhood Voices. And, you know, there's literally tens of thousands of people that are being activated to follow your lead here. So the fact, I congratulate all of you in showing your leadership here. Hopefully, we can fire up the Sandag cities, the rest of the Sandag cities, get those guys on board, and then have that successfully find its way up through California, through the other associations of government. It's a big deal, so we really appreciate, I really appreciate, we all really appreciate your support.
Thank you.
First, and then we did have two, three individuals registering support, but did not wish to speak.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Lines.
I appreciate everyone else's support for this in the room, but I have a different point of view. I want to say that it's my belief that this is a feel-good thing, and it's not actually going to result in the outcome that you would hope for. And that's because I've been working on the, with the League of California Cities, with all the cities in California, which is almost 300 cities, where I've learned that a lot of the cities, the majority of the cities in California, actually support the housing mandates. And when, I've, I've followed Our Neighborhood Voices, and I've looked to see what they've achieved, and in 2022, they failed to raise funding, in 2022, they failed to get on the ballot. So I won't be supporting this initiative, but what I think we should consider, and Councilmember O'Hara suggested this too, he said, let's try all options. I've been working with Sandag for the last year on RENA reform, which is the regional housing allocation reform, with our region, our Sandag region. With our Sandag region, we can coalesce to get behind reforming housing mandates through RENA. And Sandag wrote a letter and is engaged with the state, the State Housing and Community Development Committee, and the Senate Housing Committee, to discuss ways that, as a region, we could reform the RENA so that it worked better for the individual needs of each of the individual cities. But across the whole region, we still go in the direction of meeting the housing needs that so many people in California believe we need. For example, the city of San Diego wants more housing, the city of Santee wants more housing. They'll take more housing, but not if they don't get credit for it from the state. So when, when you look at that, you, you think, well, maybe there's some ways that, as a region, we can coalesce behind some effective change at the state level. So I would encourage my colleagues here on city council, especially our mayor, who serves the city on Sandag, and I know you're well aware of this, to continue to fight in that direction. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going next. So I'll ask my rhetorical question. How many more million-dollar condos do I have to build to make this place affordable? The answer is that's not working. That's what we've been doing. We've been overproducing million-dollar condos above moderate, and it's not making a dent at all. In fact, we're way underperforming, I think it's in the roughly 5% range that we're achieving our RENA goals for the lower income. So the, the way the state has architected this, it's failed. It's completely failed. I don't know anybody on, in Sandag that disagrees with that. So the second thing is that the initiative, I want to go back, step back a bit. We, we spent a lot of time working on objectives for the, for our organization, for the, for the city. And I want to quote. And I want to quote, we talked about strengthening our lobbying efforts and Goal Number 9.3. So these were, we got together in off-site with staff, and staff is aligned with this, and we all came to a consensus. Goal 9.3A, it is work with legislative lobbyists, CalCities and neighboring cities to support legislation that maintains local control. This is exactly what this is. Let's get even more, let's put a little finer point on that. 9.3B, consider supporting our Neighborhood Voices. Update legislative priorities to support CEQA and California Coastal Commission reform. But we have it in here. This is exactly fulfilling one of our agreed-to objectives that we agreed we'd work on this year. Secondly, I would go back and talk about our, we have a resolution adopted lobbying policy of what we lobby for in the city. And I would go back, not with this council, but the prior council. And if I went back 2019, we actually took out lobbying for local control, the council did. But when I got back on, we put it back in. And I believe it was unanimous vote that we would lobby for local control of our land use ordinances. And again, this is fulfilling not only our objective that we have adopted, it's fulfilling our legislative lobbying policy. So I support it. I want to go on to talk a little bit about Sandag. And Jim, I have not forgotten about the letter. I've been waiting for the right time, and the right time came up. So not only am I, I am the representative to Sandag, so I attend quite a few meetings there, the board meetings, but there's also a policy advisory committee, the executive committee, and I've started attending it too. Now, I'm not a member, but it's amazing what you learn. And so in this last meeting, just on the 9th, the vice chair, sorry, not vice chair, the Chair of Sandag, Lisa Hebner, our neighboring city's mayor, was very vocal about submitting a new Sandag letter, an updated Sandag letter. And this is what I want to shape. And so I think you and I are on a subcommittee. We will work on that next week. I would have done it this week, but you were out. And she was adamant about not only RENA reform, but builders remedy reform. And she envisioned our ultimate goal of, and I'm quoting her, "going to Sacramento with as many board members," end quote, "to promote and enhance local control." She said that at the executive committee meeting to the executive committee. And so this is something coming out of executive committee, and that will become part of it, will be decided on by the board. And then lastly, talking about timing. And I have been involved in our Neighborhood Voices, following it, whether it was through Livable California, our Neighborhood Voices directly for several years, and the timing is right. And that's what's fundamentally different. In fact, part of the strategy was to let the state Attorney General has been, there's no better way to say, but screwing with them and giving them artificial impediments. And so they needed, it's a little bit of gamesmanship going on, and it had to happen. But more importantly, we had our housing element, you know, a couple of years ago, actually four years ago. And the way the state housing element law works is it goes up the state. And so the next time after the Housing Accountability Act that the majority of the northern California cities hit their updates is just in the last year or so. So what's happened in the last year is the Bay Area has gotten hit. They didn't realize they had to have their certified housing elements. Wow, what did that do? They went decertified for a short period of time. And I went through my notes. Saratoga, we were worried about one builder's remedy. They have 22 builder's remedy, nuclear bombs is what I like to call them. Palo Alto has 10. Los Gatos has got 16. If you don't think they're not motivated right now, they're motivated. I've talked to mayors up and down the state. There is a reason that it's either this year, or the 2026, could be 2028, but this is so important that we have to get it done. So I support this, obviously, completely. I think, Joy, if you go test. By the way, just within Sandag, the mayor of Oceanside, we are at a CalCities meeting together with the executive director of CalCities, which is an 100-year-old organization organized for local control. And for some reason, this year, they only chose to, in their objectives, include local control of revenue sources. And we challenged her at that. Why didn't you include local control? And she was, you know, backed off, but it's not part of it. And it was Esther Sanchez from Oceanside who actually jumped up before I did. And so we've got Lisa Hebner, Esther Sanchez, Rebecca Jones, Mayor Rebecca Jones from San Marcos. Most of North County will support this at this point, and I believe quite a few. And I'd be very surprised if the mayor of Santee wouldn't support it too. So we'll continue, I'll continue fighting countywide for us and keeping this going. I support it here, and we'll be voting for it. Councilmember O'Hara.
So just going to circle back. Once again, there's no reason to not do this. There just literally isn't. It's not costing us anything. It moves something forward. And I think if we rely on Sandag and the solution that Deputy Mayor is talking about, we're just talking about shuffling RENA numbers around. We still get inundated every four years with an unreasonable number of gifts to builders that we get stuck building and dealing with. Of all the people you've had, none of them live at Fox Point, come through the CRC. All the people who went through the JFS that we have come through, none of them live at Fox Point. Not that I know of. So who are we building these things for? And just come back to it, what we need to do is if we want to help these solutions, if we truly want to help these people that we talked about helping tonight, we need to get rid of this. The question is, why are these people partnering together in the state? And we can go into that another time. But currently, if we want to help the people we talked about helping tonight, this is part of the solution for that. Getting our local control back so we can actually help people, not give builders freebies so they can build their company, their capital assets, sell their company down the road off the backs and still have the same number of people or more. Since this has started, has the cost of living gone down in Encinitas? Will it go down when Quail Meadows is built? Heck no, it's going to go up. We need to do everything. And if that means we send this letter and it doesn't work, we give it a shot. We still go to Sandag. We give it a shot. If something else comes along, we give it a shot. When someone stands there and they lie to us, we find every way to prove why they're lying, to prove that they have a bad traffic link, to prove they're beating up the environment, to prove they're not going to solve a problem that is being exaggerated for the sake of funding political agendas. And we tell them no. And we figure out how to do it until we can get the job done. That's why we send this letter. It's one brick in the wall, but that wall's got to be built, and you got to start somewhere.
Is that a motion?
Motion to approve. And while I'm at it, I want to say thank you, Mayor Ellis, for that, all of the Sandag information. And Deputy Mayor Lyons, I think it's both. We're sending the letter, let's send the letter, and let's also reform the RENA numbers here because it's also a big part of this. This is a multi-phased attack, and this is going to be like Mr. Lewis said, like the mayor said, this is going to be a lot of people at the right timing that are being upset and are finally seeing exactly what the state's doing. And if we're not, for being honest, the 400 legislations that have come up since 2017, it's not really for us ultimately. It's going to be for 10, 15, 20 years down the road for our kids. That's what's happening, is they're slowly eroding our constitutional rights, and that's what's got to be fought against. I could give a crap about the housing. It's about them taking away our rights from within. So that's where I stand. But motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a vote of, do you support local control or not? Plain and simple. We support local control. If you vote yes, you do. If you vote no, you don't.
So I'm reminded of the old saying about selling past the close. You always have to be careful.
Yeah, please, I just want to interject. Please don't put words in my mouth. My statement stands as I said it.
So can we call the question?
Motion carries with Deputy Lyons voting no.
Thank you. We're in the home stretch here, folks. Let's see, do we want to do AB 1234 or put it off till next week? It's been a long time. Okay. Next week? Next week, okay? Next week. City manager report? Anything urgent?
I too will pass.
And city attorney report?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. City clerk?
Ditto from last meeting. We are still advertising for the UFAC vacancy, and then I will open up the recruitment for one more position for the youth commission tomorrow.
And before I adjourn, we have one more. We'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of Rob Ashley, who passed away, Joy's husband. And I'm actually going to give her the honor of doing it.
I'd like to say a few words. Our community has lost a bright light, a shining star and a kind soul. Robert Allen Ashley was an Encinitas community advocate for the arts, music, history, parks, diversity, equity, and the environment. He not only brought intelligent thoughtfulness to every effort and every conversation, but he also brought emotional intelligence or empathy, which elevated each person he engaged with. He loved a good debate, as Mayor Bruce and past Mayor Tony can attest, and he always approached it with clarity and generosity for the diversity of opinions that exist. He was a leader on the board of the Pacific View EACEA, the nonprofit led by Garth Murphy and then John Dewald, which launched the Pacific View Arts Center effort. He was the Chair of the Encinitas Historical Society and an active participant in that chamber in Cardiff 101. His work as a volunteer for important city efforts forever influenced the success of the effort. But his humble nature never required him to be in the spotlight. I am profoundly grateful to have shared his life, a life exemplified by passion, loyalty, and commitment to his family, community, friends, and colleagues. He served Encinitas wisely and selfishly. Tonight, I adjourn our May 14, 2025 council meeting in honor of my husband, Rob Ashley, who passed away surrounded by his loving family on March 21st.
Thank you. Well done. Thank you.
So that they don't have to get into a car to get places, they can figure out a safe way to cross the tracks. The city of Encinitas has a big cycling culture. A lot of our residents have traditional bicycles.